I'd like to bring this evening meeting of the Galita City Council to order of November the 19th, 2024. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, if we can have roll call.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Councilmember Kiriyako.
Here.
Councilmember Kazdin.
Here.
Mayor Protempore Reyes Martin.
Here.
And Mayor Perotti.
And I'd like to introduce, we have Spanish interpretation. Do we have somebody that would come up and introduce yourself?
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening. My name is Hugo Santos, and I'm here with my colleague Regina, and we're interpreters from English into Spanish. So if anyone in the audience wants to hear this event in English, in Spanish, sorry, let us know, and we have devices for you. Este es un anuncio para las personas que quieran escuchar toda la reunión en español. Tenemos algunos dispositivos listos para ustedes. Así que cualquiera de ustedes que quiera usarlos, levante la mano y les pasaré un dispositivo. Thank you. Gracias.
Thank you so much. Okay, Mr. Isaac, can you give us a report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to reiterate for the public, there was an October 30th special meeting, and the closed session items that were read into the record at that time, and was as stated at the record at that date, there was no reportable action for those agendized closed session. As well, for tonight's meeting, there was one closed session read into the record at 4:00 p.m. There was no reportable action on that item this evening as well.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll have public forum. Anybody that wishes to speak to anything on the agenda that's not on the agenda and pertaining to this jurisdiction?
I do have two speaker slips for public forum, and if any members of the Zoom webinar wish like to speak, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Our first speaker for public forum is Catherine Emery, followed by April Reed.
Good evening. Is it time?
Yes, it is.
Hello, councilmembers. Mayor, thank you so much for having me. I'm Catherine Emery. I'm Executive Director of Santa Barbara Audubon Society, and we are nonprofit locally, and our mission is to protect birds and their habitats and connect people with birds. I'm here for three main points. They're really brief. First is just to thank the City of Galita for your continued generous sponsorship of our annual Winter Bird Count for Kids that we have at Lake Los Canarios in January. And I wanted to present T-shirts to the council members.
Oh, beautiful.
Show the people on Zoom. I don't know where Zoom is, but here you go. What's really special about them is they were made by our former high school student board representative, Lucy London. So she designed it. Hold it up. Holding it up for...
Nice.
Is that right? Okay, I'll be brief. So these are for all of you. I hope they fit. And in 2024, we actually completed our 10th annual event. We had 16 schools representative, of which eight were in Galita, and we counted over 49 species. It's a really popular volunteer-driven community event. It is multi-generational, and we love it. So we're really excited to have it again. And the third thing I want to say is just invite you all, and invite everyone else here to join us this year, January 25th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. It's free, and it's open to the public, and it's at Lake Los Canarios. More information is on our website. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next public speaker is April Reed.
Sorry, give me a minute. I appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry.
Just one second. Just let me know when.
I'm just getting used to this thing. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Just wanted to speak in general about what I have to go through in order to even try to get onto a Zoom webinar. I'm convinced at this point that it was sabotaged, that I wasn't able to get on. I tried a million different things to get on it. It was a Zoom webinar, not in person. And I tried a bunch of different stuff to get on it, and I missed it, which I kind of think was intentional. And when I emailed after the fact, the response was, well, if I wanted to hear the meeting, I should go in person. Not quite sure how I'm supposed to go in person to a Zoom-only webinar, but given the four years of being lied to by city council and staff, being prevented to go to meetings, it's kind of hard to not think it is intentional. I know that there was a recent election, and everyone is kind of emboldened by that. So I really don't appreciate, as a longtime member of Galita, being sabotaged. And again, I have no doubt at this point that it was. I was also told that if I wanted my comments to be included, I need to write a letter. I don't know how I'm supposed to write a letter when there was a workshop, and the workshop is supposed to tell me what the ADU thing was all about. So now I've missed that one. Missed the three housing meetings four years ago, and I was expressly told by the city that you guys wouldn't build on Kenwood. I'm not quite sure why you don't want to hear from the public. I'm probably not the only one. I'm just the only one who's persistent. And I know you guys think that this is a referendum on what the public wants. I just don't know if it's a referendum on what you guys actually do here, or what you guys pretend that you do in your articles that you write. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, I have a quick question. What, I'm sorry, I missed, what webinar was it that you were trying, that you had difficulty getting on?
The ADU one on November 13th. It's a Zoom-only webinar.
Okay.
I missed that completely. I spent the whole hour trying to get on. Before that, nobody sent me an ID number, a link, or anything. So I emailed them earlier that day and said, please send me a link, please send me an ID, send me where I need to get on, when I registered four times, because it wouldn't accept my registration at all. And the only link I got didn't work. I have never in my life had a problem with Zoom, ever. This is the first time. And now I've missed this meeting, so I don't even know what it's about, or what's in it, or what it contains, or anything. I tried to keep up, but I don't know, you know, I'm not an expert like you guys are supposed to be.
Well, thank you. I will personally look into what happened.
Thank you. You can see my emails that I sent to the person in charge. Give me a minute again. Sorry.
That's okay.
And Madam Mayor, I do have two more speaker slips that are related to the city manager update. Would you like to have those now during public forum, or during...
Oh, let's wait for the...
Okay, great. Thank you. I have no more speaker slips for public forum.
Okay. We'll let her get settled. It's so nifty that I can do that. I keep forgetting that I can do that. Thank you. Okay, do we have any amendments or adjustments to our agenda this evening?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any recommended adjustments, but I can go into city manager's report, which was just referenced.
Absolutely.
So there is one bulleted item on the city manager's report, acknowledgement of the Helen Putnam Award that the city received this year. So I will kick it off, and then turn it over to you, and turn it over to some other people. But I'll just kick it off by saying, yeah, this is a prestigious award that the Organization of Cal Cities does every year. We're a member of Cal Cities. There's 482 cities in California, I believe, and they have this award process where cities submit applications each year. And yeah, it's a very prestigious award, the program that they have. And we submitted an application this year for our LEED Academy, and it won. And as the council knows, when we went down to the conference in Long Beach, we received that award then. But we have the opportunity to receive it again here locally, so we're going to do that. So the comments I want to make, I'm going to let Kelly come up in a minute and maybe talk a little bit about the LEED Academy in a minute. But the comments I want to make is just to acknowledge how we got here. I'm going to start with the leadership of the council. It's the leadership of the council that led to the LEED Academy. See what I did there?
[laughing]
That led to the LEED Academy that we've now been doing for five or six years. And then the LEED Academy is put on by Kelly Hoover, Jamie Shaw, Marcus Martinez. They're all in the audience, and I'm going to call Kelly up in a minute. And then the application that we submitted was done by Shannon Kern. I'm not sure if she's in the audience. I don't see her. She put the application together, and really obviously put together a dynamic application, showing off the program, and it was successful, as we know. So I want to acknowledge her as well. And then also in the audience, who we're going to give a chance to come up as well, is the person who's officially presenting us with the award tonight, Dave Mullenex, works with Cal Cities. He's our Channel County Rep for this region. So Dave's here, so he can come up in a minute and also make it official. But with that, I think I've acknowledged the people I want to acknowledge, and I will turn it over to you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, I just want to say, first of all, it was such an honor to be in Long Beach for this conference, and stand up in front of hundreds of people, and accept this award on behalf of the City of Galita. But I really want to acknowledge, and of course, we had quite a group of staff and supporters there, all yelling and screaming and standing up. So it was really something to behold. I'll never personally forget it. But I want to recognize what I call the superstars of this project, of this program. And it started with councilmember Richards. He went to a League of Cities, I believe, conference, and he heard about this, and he came back to council, and he was so excited, and told us, you know, and we went, well, yeah, let's do it. And at that time, we had Valerie Cantinella, who was our Public Information Officer, and she said, okay. And so I don't know how, exactly how the name LEED came up. Maybe you could tell us at some point. But we got started. And then soon after, Kelly Hoover and her fabulous team, Marcus Martinez, Jamie Shaw, you know, they came on board and did a lot of videos. And the one that really was inspirational, and I think was acknowledged, was the last LEED Academy that we done, that we did. It was bilingual. So we had quite a few folks that came. And you know what we've discovered from this is that many, and students. I just have to give one example. The very first LEED Academy, there is, we asked everybody in the beginning, and there was a student in the group, only one at that time. And why did you decide to do this? And he stood up, and he said, my dad made me. So, but at the end of the academy, we ask everybody on the last day, we come in and give them certificates, and we acknowledge them, they graduate, it's a big event. And that same student got up and said, I am really glad my dad made me do that, and I'm going to bring back this information to others, other students. And we've had students. And some of these students, and some of the folks that are, that have accomplished LEED, had been on the LEED Academy, have continued on to boards and commissions, and that's what we wanted. We wanted people to know, and I'm sure Kelly will tell you a little bit more than I am. But I also want to recognize Shannon Kern. Just great, you know, great putting, she put the application together. So, you know, anyway, where are you? There she is. So I hope we can give them all an applaud. I'm sure Kelly will want a picture with everyone, yes? Okay, I think with...
Kelly, I think you're up next, and then Dave. We have a program here. You're up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, and everybody here. Thank you to Dave Mullenex for making the trip here. This was just such an honor to be a part of such a great experience, just to be a part of the LEED Academy, and take the foundation that you all started. And then for Jamie and Marcos to come on in, and really kind of, how do we make it more interactive, and get more people involved? And they just really have made it wonderful. And I will say, LEED Galita is special because it's a six-week class. It's intimate with like 30 people, and you really get a front row seat as to how local government works. And also, you make a ton of friends. I mean, we have, if you, would you stand if you are a graduate of the LEED Academy, please? We have many in the audience tonight. So we have had a total of four LEED Galita academies. The last two have been bilingual. And so that's over 100 people who have gone through this academy, and they really do feel differently after they have graduated. And they have new friends in the community, and we have a connection with them. So thank you to our city manager, Robert Nisbet. It was his encouragement. He's the one who came in when he first came on as city manager, and he sat in on LEED Galita, and presented, and he said, wow, this is very special. This is Helen Putnam Award-winning material. And so it was really your encouragement that put us in place to get this award. It means a lot. It was wonderful to be a part of it. And thank you to Valerie for really getting it started, setting the foundation, and Kyle for coming back with the idea. And to everyone who's participated, and I want to give a plug, we are accepting applications right now for the next LEED Galita, which starts in January. And it's going to be a lot of fun. We're planning it right now. The spots fill up quickly. So if you know someone who's interested, please tell them to, don't wait, sign up, and they will not regret it. It'll be a wonderful time. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone, for being here and being excited for us.
Thank you. Mr. Mullenex?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Always good to be in Galita, and especially tonight, being able to present you with a, it is a prestigious award. It's our Award for Excellence. My name is Dave Mullenex. I'm with the League of California Cities. And just real briefly, for those who haven't heard of us before, we represent all 482 cities in the state, and we have programs for education, where we have seminars and conferences all year long, educating staff and council members on new laws, how cities around the state have met those challenges with new laws, and different challenges that we deal with each and every day to make our communities better, and making sure the council is also where and able to share their stories with other council members and staff members from around the state. Both small cities and large cities, we often are dealing with very similar issues. And again, it really comes down to trying to make our communities a better place to live. On the other side, we have an advocacy arm, where we have, there's about 2,000 bills that are submitted every year in the legislature, and about 500 of them will impact local governments in one way or another, whether it's housing, transportation, environmental quality, those type of policy areas. And we have lobbyists up there in Sacramento that, they are the front line up there in the legislature. And then I'm one of 15 regional managers around the state to try to make sure that our council members and staff members in each city are aware of those bills, aware of how they impact us, and to make sure that not only council members, but the communities also are able to lobby their legislators, assembly members, and senators up there in Sacramento as effectively as possible. Because when everybody gets engaged, whether it's mayors, council members, it really has an impact when city leaders get involved as well. And that really can often turn the tide on a lot of these bills. But enough of that. I'm very pleased to able to be able to present our Helen Putnam Award for Excellence. 186 cities applied for this award this past year. We give out 12 in different categories. There were also, you were the only city in the Channel Counties Division to receive a Helen Putnam Award this year. And the Channel Counties is the 25 cities in San Luis Obispo, Santa Barbara, and Ventura Counties. So outstanding really reflects the excellence of your staff and the leadership of your council. Helen Putnam, we have had this award for excellence since 1982. Helen Putnam was really embodied what a public servant is supposed to be. She was a mother, a teacher, a principal, a mayor, and a county supervisor. And she really felt that living up to your potential was the true standard of excellence, and she really does embody what we feel is a standard of excellence for cities around the state. So without further ado, this award is for, again, the program that was described earlier, and the category is enhancing public trust, ethics, and community involvement. And again, my pleasure to be able to present this
Oh, nice.
to your city. Let me, mind if I just...
Yeah. Should we all go up and take a picture? I think we should go, we'll come up to you. Kelly wouldn't be telling without wanting a picture.
Yes.
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 Okay.
Well, Dave, you go in the middle, hold the mayor.
Yes.
Valerie.
We're going to do that one.
Okay.
I think you guys are too old.
Oh.
Wait, I don't, I'm just watching Kelly.
Get these two in the middle.
Okay.
And then start going.
Way to frame it. She has a secret formula.
She knows how to frame it.
All right, ready? One, two, three. Do it a little more. One, two, three. One, two, three. Okay.
And then can I ask, can I ask Valerie to come in this one?
Yeah, Valerie.
Congratulations, all of you.
One, two, one, three.
And then one more. Can I have all the LEED graduates who are here come up?
Oh.
They're over there. Oh, wait, I couldn't see it.
Sorry, this is important.
Can the LEED people fill in?
Yeah.
You came all this way, you're getting the job.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of people.
Ashley, after Neil.
That's all I wanted to know.
Any smaller LEED people in front, or smaller city people?
Speaking of daylight.
Valerie, in stature, no, I'm sorry.
He called up with the shorter side.
The more you guys are doing this, the better.
One, two, three.
Three, one, two, three.
Okay.
Okay.
Great job, everybody.
Stay for the rest of the meeting, right?
Two-hour drive.
Okay. I'm wondering, I'd like to see if we have any public comment on this item.
We do have two speaker slips, and if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. Our first speaker is Lynn Darneton, followed by Leonardo Dominguez.
Hi.
Hi.
So my husband and I were participants in the first bilingual LEED. And I just want you to know that every time anyone complains to me about something that happened in the city, or the parking, or anything, I tell them about LEED.
Thank you.
And let them know that at the end of those six weeks, they'll have met the mayor, everyone on the council, every significant department head, the city manager. They will know exactly what goes on in our city. It will be completely transparent to them. They'll know who to contact, and how to get what they want done, done. I don't know if any of them are registered, but I'm proud to be in a city that has that kind of care for the outreach, that kind of transparency, and that I can offer that, to say, anything you want to know, just head on down there, register in LEED, and you'll be in the know. So thank you for LEED. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Leonardo Dominguez.
Hi. Good to see you.
Buenos noches. Les voy a hablar español porque es mi lengua nativa. Solamente quiero darle las gracias a todos ustedes.
I just want to thank all of you
por tomarnos en cuenta la comunidad de habla hispana, ya que es algo muy hermoso para mí, el que ya nos estén tomando en cuenta.
For taking us into account, for taking the Spanish-speaking community into account. And that's something that's really beautiful to me. Ya que es algo muy hermoso para mí el que ya nos estén tomando en cuenta.
For taking us into account, for taking the Spanish-speaking community into account. And that's something that's really beautiful to me, that you are thinking of us.
Esta es la primera vez que yo tengo esta oportunidad de agradecerles por lo amable que son y que nos han invitado a la comunidad de los eventos que han hecho. Y me siento orgulloso de que me tienen esta oportunidad para poder darles las gracias.
This is the first time that I've had the opportunity to thank you all for the kindness that you've shown us, for inviting us to all of these events, and for welcoming us.
Todos los eventos que han hecho son muy buenos. Es algo que es de admirar porque se han hecho muchas cosas muy buenas. Y pues voy a tratar de estudiar mucho más inglés para poder formar parte con ustedes como bilingüe.
I appreciate all of the events that you've hosted, and I think that they're really, really great events. And for my part, I'm going to work really hard on my English so that I can come back and participate a lot more with you all.
Muchísimas gracias.
And thank you very much. It's an honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And we have no additional public speakers.
Hey, I see Councilmember Richards. You have a few words to say, star, superstar.
Thank you. Well, I want to first thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the acknowledgement by mentioning me. But I really can't take much credit for this at all. I mean, it wasn't my idea. It was an idea that I heard about that another city was doing, and I thought it sounded good. So I guess I recognized a good idea, and then I brought it back. So I view my role here as finding a seed in the woods and bringing it here and letting it germinate. And I'm so happy to see how it's blossomed and what it's become. And I really need to recognize Valerie Cantinella, who was really the first staff person here that did it, you know, in the beginning. And it's been so gratifying seeing this program. Just every time we do it, it just gets better and better. And I'm very happy to see it so successful. And of course, very proud that we got this recognition. But really, the idea was to bring a program to Galita, to have something that really allows people to learn about our government, to be able to find out what happens behind these walls. It's very mystifying for a lot of our public to understand how our government works. And this program really walks our community through this program and goes through our departments and learns how our budgeting process works and learns about the library and learns about all the services that are offered by the city. But it's just so important to have a mechanism that people feel involved, that they can be engaged in the process, in this democratic process. You know, this is something that is a way to have people be a part of the decision-making process and to be heard and to be involved and to be a part of that. And I know from my experience here, I'm finishing now my eighth year on the council. And I can say that all of the decisions that we've made, where we had more public input, where we had more public engagement, where we had the public coming to us, we made better decisions because we heard from people. And I can think of many examples where we were going in one direction, and then we heard from people that, you know, that with more information, that a different perspective that we hadn't considered, that took us in a completely different direction that ended up being the best thing ever. That was how it worked. And so I'm very happy to see the people here engaged and involved. And I'm so happy to have the graduates come back and give testimonies about the program. And I'm just very grateful that our community has embraced this. And I'm so happy and proud to be here in Galita. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We can now move on to consent calendar.
Item A1, approval of the city council meeting minutes of August 20, 2024, and the city council meeting minutes of October 15, 2024. Item A2, ratification of mayoral appointments to the Public Engagement Commission, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, the Library Advisory Commission, the Public Tree Advisory Commission, and the Design Review Board. Item A3, acceptance of the September 2024 check register. Item A4, amended and restated Solid Waste Community Program and Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Agreement. Item A5, Active Transportation Program Cycle 7 Large Metropolitan Planning Organization Grant Opportunity for San Jose Creek Multipurpose Bike Path. Item A6, Regional Early Action Planning Grant Program Funding for San Jose Creek Multipurpose Path Project. Item A7, resolution designating back-in angled parking on the north side of Cathedral Oaks Road at the vicinity of North Gate Drive and authorizing no parking zones on the south and north sides of Cathedral Oaks Road at the vicinity between Paseo del Pino and North Gate Drive. Item A8, initiation of 2025 to 2026 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Galita City Grant Programs. And item A9, Amendment Number 3 to the Transit and Intercity Rail Capital Program Funding Agreement Number 2018-123 with Santa Barbara County Association of Governments for the Galita Train Depot Project.
Thank you. Council wish to pull any item from consent? I'm not seeing any. Okay. Do we have any public comments?
I do not have any speaker slips. But if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak on an item on the consent calendar, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. And I don't see any hands raised.
Okay, then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move approval.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Kiryako?
Aye.
Councilmember Kasdan?
Aye.
Mayor Protempo Reyes Martin?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes happened. There it is. Okay. Moving on. Next, we have a special presentation.
That is Item B1, 20-year anniversary, Ann Wells Butterfly Title.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to just begin acknowledging Ann Wells. We all know that Galita is a special place. And everybody who comes here and visits and resides here knows that Galita is a special place. But what many people may not know is that Ann Wells, more than any single person perhaps, is responsible for what Galita is today, at least in terms of its land use. For the past 20 years, since shortly after the city's incorporation, Ann Wells has been Galita's Advanced Planning Manager. She has authored more plans and programs than I could possibly mention in a few minutes. But just to name a few, she is the chief architect of the 2006 general plan. She's also the architect of the Title 17 zoning ordinances and the housing element. I've known Ann since before she worked here, when she was still a consultant at URS. And I encountered her first when I was a planner at Santa Barbara County, and she was working on the Elwood Deveraux Open Space Plan, which has been, of course, formative for the city of Galita. I've been fortunate to work with her directly now over the last seven years. And she is unquestionably one of the most talented, capable, hard-working planners I know, a consummate planning professional. In a real sense, Galita is Ann's life work. Ann Wells is Galita. So it is with great pleasure that I acknowledge her for her 20 years of service.
Get up here. So it's such an honor to be able to be the one to present you with an appreciation of Ann Wells, Advanced Planning Manager, 20 years of distinguished service, 2004 to 2024, from the city of Galita. And of course, it had to be a butterfly. You know, I will just say that, you know, Director Imhoff mentioned quite a few things that you were responsible for. But you also, I want to mention how helpful you were with working with State Lands and the decommissioning of the piers and decommissioning of Platform Holly. That was a lot of work, and I really appreciate all that work and everything else that you've done. So thank you so much. So here's your butterfly. And you can't leave us, you know. You've had that history, that rich history. You need to stay for another 20. And I'm sure you would like to say a few words.
Thank you, everyone, for the kind words. It's really been my pleasure to serve you all and the public over the last 20 years. And I would say it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to work for a new city. We started, we didn't have walls, we didn't have rules, we didn't have formative documents. And then collectively, we wrote the general plan, and that has guided us really since. And I don't know what else to say about being able to participate in something like this. It's just been really amazing, and I thank everyone, and the public especially. Right after incorporation, they were instrumental in preparing the general plan. And I feel like that energy is still here in City Hall. So with that, thank you. It's been an amazing journey. And thank you to my family. They're being amazingly quiet over there. We have more great things ahead of us, so looking forward to it. Thank you.
Well, we need to get a picture for sure. Okay. I'm wondering if council has any remarks?
I do.
See Councilmember Kasdan?
I guess I just want to note how it doesn't, the range of work, of topics that's covered, whether it's energy projects, whether it's conservation-related projects, land planning. It's an astonishing range of material that you guys cover and in-depth and sophisticated analysis. It's really remarkable. And, you know, when we think, what is it that we want to take away from the jobs that we do in some ways, often when we're doing things that are a team or something like that, you know, in many ways, what you hope for is the respect of your peers and the respect of others, that they think you're doing well and you are great. So you do a terrific job, and we appreciate it. So thank you.
Councilmember Kiryako?
Well, I think Councilmember Kasdan covered a lot of what I was going to say. You know, I came in, I came to this council end of 2018 and early 2019, going into 2020, we were really getting, revving up on the new zoning ordinance. And so I really got to see firsthand, watching you and the team kind of shepherd that process across the finish line. And even with some late insertions, some ideas from new council members and from the community, we were able to make adjustments, do some really cool, cutting-edge stuff. And I'm really proud of the work that you've done. I'm really proud of the work we've all done together. But we really couldn't do it without you. Getting through the housing element process is obviously very challenging. A lot of other cities are still trying to get through that same process. There are still cities in this county that don't have a housing element. And you helped get us over the finish line. And we're here, and we're able to plan for our future. And that's because of the work of you and the team. I just want to say thank you.
Mayor Protempo Reyes Martin? Oh, my, okay. Well, I'm so happy to have you be recognized tonight. I had the chance to see your work as staff years ago, and then now as a council member. And you are just an incredible force of a woman in planning. You are so brilliant, and you're so good at explaining really complex regulatory issues, whether it's around energy or land use or laws that are coming down. I mean, your expertise and knowledge has just been invaluable for 20 years. And I hope you are proud of all the work that you've done. And I'm really glad that your family is here. For anyone who's in a position like yours, we know your family is really part of a lot of the work you do too. And I can't believe how grown up your kids are. I remember seeing them running around the building when they were much younger. So I hope they are also very proud of their mom. So congratulations. Councilmember Richards?
Thank you. I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. And I'll just add that I'm personally very grateful for all of your service to the city, for what you've done, your dedication, your professionalism, and your expertise. And that you chose to dedicate that to the city and to our residents and to our community. And I'm very grateful. So thank you so much.
Do we have any other speakers?
I do have one speaker slip. And if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Our first speaker is April Reed.
All right, I've been waiting a long time for this. All this crap that people are speaking about you, all this pretend that you're such a great person. Let's talk about who you really are. Four years ago, when, no, not language, this is nice, trust me. I mean, I could use a lot of four-letter words when it speaks to Ms. Wells. Four years ago, when I was trying to find out what was going on with Kenwood Village, I was expressly told by you that I didn't need to worry because the city council wasn't going to allow building on that property. So for four years, I didn't feel like I needed to show up, otherwise I would have. I missed out on the opportunity to go to the three workshops that were held four years ago. Missed out on a lot of things. I missed out on the ability to have any input until I found out in July of 2023 that you guys actually were going to consider rezoning and building on Kenwood, which was a total shock to me. That's just for starters. In terms of rezoning and the housing, we gave you, or Rich Woster gave you, a lot of different houses and properties that could be looked at. But all you did was, sorry, call a couple of people, get whatever you could, call a couple of people, get whatever you could, bailed on the rest, and had no intention of looking for the best properties. I've told you this before, you should have been fired a long time ago. You're an awful, awful city employee, and the fact that I have to sit here and listen to all of you praise her is nauseating. The fact that you think, I'm sorry, I don't understand what's so funny, you think lying to the public is funny? Was that your direction? Yeah? Okay. I got a lot more to say, but I've been waiting a long time for this.
Thank you.
I do have one hand raised on Zoom, and our next speaker in person is Valerie Cantinella.
Your family's so cute. Thank you, Blake.
Council, and congratulations to Ann Wells. As many of you know, I had the opportunity to work with Ann for almost 10 years at the city, and one of the most memorable times was the six weeks that we worked the oil spill, which was an other duty as assigned, and it's during that time I got to know Ann with the character and the integrity that she certainly brings to the table every single day at the city of Galita. And though we don't always agree on everything, which is the wonderful benefit of democracy, I know that she acts with integrity and the highest ethics and does the best job she can every day, every single day for the city of Galita. And so, I'd like to just really celebrate you. I appreciate you. Thank you for all the work that you've done. It's to be commended. Thanks.
Thank you.
And our next speaker on Zoom is Brian Smith. Mr. Smith, if you can please unmute yourself?
Yes, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm a retired city planner from the city of Santa Maria, and I've known Ann for 20-plus years. I even worked with her with the consulting firm that Mr. Emhoff was just describing. I would echo all of the congratulations given to Ann. I've known her for many, many years. As a retired planner, I've been monitoring all the planning projects that you've been pursuing with the city, and I know Ann is a key part of all of those. So, I just want to add my congratulations, Ann. It's been a pleasure knowing you for many, many years. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have no additional public speakers.
Okay, thank you. Then we could move on to the next item?
And that is Item C1, Consideration of General Plan and Title 17 Zoning Amendments to Implement Housing Element 2023 to 2031 Programs and Determination That the Amendments Are Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do you think so? No, do you want to do that? No? Five-minute break?
Yeah.
Let's do a five-minute break. I'm sorry. It was requested. Five-minute break. Would you please read the next item until the agenda?
It's Item C1, Consideration of General Plan and Title 17 Zoning Amendments to Implement Housing Element 2023 to 2031 Programs and Determination That the Amendments Are Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to remind everybody, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. We will have a presentation by staff. Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of staff, and more council questions of the public and staff, from staff or staff. Close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Council can go into deliberations, close the public hearing, and entertain a motion. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Wells.
Hello, and welcome to this public hearing for general plan and Title 17 amendments to implement certain housing element programs. I'm Advanced Planning Manager Ann Wells, and I'm accompanied by Supervising Planner Andy Newkirk, and we'll both be presenting this item tonight. And I wanted to flag, before we get started, that the timing of the item is important because the state looks, State Housing and Community Development Department looks at our 2024 Annual Progress Report that you'll be seeing soon enough here, that is due to them in April, and they will verify that we are implementing the programs probably to their satisfaction and on time. And so, that's all kind of in line with the certification of our housing element with the state. So, we really built this into our work program so that we can get to these items this year. The packet that's in front of you is typical of the other hearing packets with the general plan amendment in Attachment 1, which is a rezo, and then the ordinance is in Attachment 2, and then track change version of Title 17, so you can see what literally changed is in Attachment 3. We did receive two public, written public comments that are posted online, and you have those as well. One was from the State Geologic Energy Management Division, or CalGEM. It doesn't affect or pertain specifically to the item that's before you tonight, because that's kind of a stock letter. And then the other one was from the Saniness Band of Chumash Indians, and they stated no consultation needed and other things, but that was the key part of their letter. So, we're going to just jump right into it, and the public hearing agenda, I won't run through it because I think you just said it perfectly, Mayor, and laid out the program for you tonight, and we'll go into talking about the specifics of the amendments that have been proposed and recommended by the Planning Commission.
Thanks, Ann. Mayor and council members, so as you're all aware, we amended, we adopted the amended housing element 2023 to 2031 in December and received what we call certification from HCD earlier this year. And as Ann was mentioning, we have a lot of programs in that housing element with certain commitments and time horizons, and so some of those commitments are within the calendar year of 2024. We've actually brought quite a few amendments to you to implement the housing element. This is our fourth time coming with zoning ordinance amendments to implement the housing element. This set of amendments, as well as the general plan amendment, went to the Planning Commission for recommendation on the 14th of October, and what's presented in the packet is the Planning Commission recommendation. Well, note on the next slide, there were two no votes, and it had to do with one particular item, so we'll just flag that so that you're aware of the discussion surrounding that item. And with no further ado, that is, the item that had the no votes was an ordinance amendment to alter how we, what we require for open space for mixed-use projects, for the residential component of mixed-use projects. Currently, if more than 40% of the floor area is residential, you have to, for every unit, there has to be 100 square feet of common open space, which is available to all residents. And then, depending on what floor, either 60 or 200 square feet of what we call restricted or personal open space, and that's only available to one residence. And so, there's some, flagging a concern and possible constraint to get mixed use, especially where we already have existing development and kind of a built environment that an applicant would have to work within. Proposed for amending is, in those instances, just requiring 160 square feet of open space, and it can be any combination of restricted and/or common. So, it really, it gives that flexibility in the design to kind of fit what works for that site. The dissenting votes at Planning Commission were in support of the 160-square-feet standard, but we're seeking to require a certain amount of common open space. However, the Planning Commission recommendation is that 160 with the flexibility, and that's also staff's recommendation, and really that's borne out to consider like different site constraints, they're, you know, just trying to make it flexible for mixed-use residential development. If you remember during the housing element process, when we started out on the housing element, we really wanted to focus on our mixed-use sites, particularly towards counting our RENA requirement, and one of the challenges we had was we didn't have a lot of examples of conversions to mixed-use on sites that were all non-residential. And so, this edit is really in an effort to support some flexibility to see if we can get some of the, to support some conversion or addition of residential units on those non-residential sites, and staff supports that, keeping that flexibility as much as possible to see if we can start seeing some of those projects move forward, both towards meeting RENA in the sixth cycle and as evidence in future housing elements that we can produce those mixed-use redevelopment projects. With that said, if council is interested in moving forward with a minimum requirement of common open space as part of that standard, we will be prepared with language, should council want to go in that direction. And I would say, oh, sorry, one other thing we wanted to flag is, while it was a conversion from commercial to pure residential, the Buena Tierra project is an example, they didn't have to meet our development standards because of the funding source, but initially, when we looked at that project, the restricted personal open space would have been a challenge because it was an example of a conversion where it wasn't designed with those individual open space options that would be available to just the one unit. So, that was an example, while it wasn't converting to mixed use, just the idea of where you have like a, you know, a built structure and you're looking to get residential, that standard can be a problem. And I also wanted to flag, one other limitation is we don't allow rooftops to be counted as common open space. So, when you're thinking about the challenges of the built environment, we can't just put it, as the standard, as the definition is currently in Arizona code, you can't just utilize a rooftop to meet your common open space. So, I wanted to flag those couple items as well. The next item is streamlining 100% affordable projects, and that's, and the way we've proposed this in the ordinance is all units are available to only moderate or lower income. So, it's all, we call that BMR, below market rate, and currently, those projects would typically need a development plan, which is a discretionary project, may go to a zoning administrator or planning commission, and what's proposed is to make them ministerial, utilizing objective design standards. So, they don't have the development plan, don't have to go through the design review process. It's a much more straightforward process. It's a pretty significant carrot, but it's also the types of projects where we'll get a lot of low-market rates. So, there's kind of that trade-off and incentive for those projects that can really help us achieve those RENA numbers that are really challenging on market-rate projects. The next item is changes to our ESHM apps and how we deal with those ESHM map changes. Typically, now, we treat those as a general plan amendment for the specific project. However, that makes it a legislative action, which includes a general plan amendment initiation, and it kind of elevates the process and adds to the processing required and the hearings required for a project. And it also removes the project from the permit streamlining act. act. So there, certain shorter timelines then don't apply. And so what we wanted to do with some amendments is to clarify how we're going to treat those map changes when a project comes in looking to develop in a way that deviates from the ESHA, environmentally sensitive habitat area boundaries in our general plan currently. We have those mapped in the conservation element and open space element. And so what's proposed, and there's amendments, this is the one item where there's a general plan amendment, as well as Title 17 amendments. What is proposed is to clarify in both places this process and make it clear that the ESHM map change does not, is not considered a general plan amendment for the project itself. And as part of the conservation element policy amendment, we're committing as a city to do those updates in the general plan every five years based on new information over that five-year period. So we're committing as staff, that'll be a work program item every five years to do that update, but the project itself doesn't have to do that general plan amendment. However, we also want to make clear, and we're doing this in the policy and the regulations, that no decision-maker below Planning Commission can approve those deviations from the mapped ESHA with a project. So if the project would otherwise be a staff-level project, it would now get elevated up to Planning Commission, and Planning Commission would have to consider that, those changes at a public hearing with noticing and specific requirements in that noticing to explicitly state that as part of this project, there is a, it would be considered with a different ESHA boundary than what's mapped in the general plan, to make it very clear and transparent what's happening. And there would be a specific finding that would go to the decision-maker stating that there's substantial evidence to support the difference in the mapped boundary, and that that evidence would be reviewed by a city-appointed biologist. And that was a change that Planning Commission requested. So what we're doing here is trying to thread the needle, remove the legislative action that would be with the project, that general plan amendment, but also making sure that there's a high level of public review and notice, and so that, you know, there's nothing done at the staff level, nothing where the public wouldn't be aware of what's being reviewed and how a project is being considered. So we think these changes will kind of thread that needle pretty well. And so that's what we've tried to do there. The next item is parking standards, and as I'm sure you all remember, we often would get, we got several letters from HCD on drafts of the housing element, adopted housing elements, and typically, those letters would say, "You need to analyze this more, and once you analyze more, think, consider programs you might need to do." Parking was the one place where HCD said, "Reduce your parking for studios and one bedrooms." It was unequivocal in their letter to us. So we added the program in the housing element to commit to that. Before Title 17, the standard was one space per unit for studio one bedrooms. We increased that with Title 17 to two spaces, and in the proposed ordinance, we proposed one space for studios and one and a half for one bedrooms, as a kind of a middle ground that we think will be acceptable. As part of that program, we also committed to look at where there's some parking congestion, and kind of what that might look like, in talking to our parking enforcement officer, and just kind of what we know of some of the areas where there's a lot of street parking. And again, we're talking about studio one bedrooms of multifamily, so we're not considering any changes to parking in our single-family residential neighborhoods. But we looked at, you know, out in Elwood on Matilda Drive, and we looked at some of the area north of Hollister. In Old Town is two areas that has a lot of utilization of street parking for residences. And these are just two examples, but they're pretty, they fit with a lot of the different sites we looked at, where you would have a lot, the projects were approved with a lot less parking than is entitled, would be required now in Title 17, but also even with these reductions, you'd still see a lot more required onsite parking than those projects were originally entitled for. A lot of them were, you know, were one space per unit for all types of units and no guest parking, so there really was a lot less parking. So even with this reduction, there'll still be, you know, quite a bit more required than in some of those constrained sites on those residential projects. Finally, we have some other amendments. We just put these in one slide. They didn't elicit much or any discussion at Planning Commission, so we just wanted to highlight these quickly. We're certainly happy to answer any questions you might have about them, but just at a high level, we have some zoning ordinance amendments to really try to protect all of our existing housing units from redevelopment where we'd lose units. And so we've kind of tightened up those regulations. Again, as hard as it is to get new development, new housing built, we don't want to lose our existing stock. We also created an exemption from development plans, which again is that more involved review process for small mixed-use projects. There's nothing in our code right now that explicitly calls out a development plan exemption for mixed-use projects. So we proposed a small, for small mixed-use projects, 5,000 square feet, commercial, four units or less, that they could go through with a land use permit, which would be at the staff level. We also amended a couple development plan and design review findings to make it clear that a project cannot simply be denied because of its density, if it was within the allowed density for the site. So you couldn't say something like, "It's not compatible with the neighborhood because it's 20 units per acre," just to make clear that a site, that in and of itself does not make it incompatible with the neighborhood. And then finally, we amended some of the density bonus regulations to do the best we can to ensure the longest term of affordability for projects for below-market rate units that are approved through a density bonus project. And so there's some fine-tuning there, but we think it's an improvement to, particularly for for-sale units built through density bonus, that we're ensuring as long a term of affordability as possible. And as the title of the item suggests, these amendments, both to the general plan and to Title 17, are exempt from SEQA for a variety of reasons, and in particular, we analyzed all of the housing element commitments as part of the addendum to the general plan EIR when we adopted the housing element. So with that, staff's recommendation is to adopt the resolution, which would amend the general plan, in particular, conservation element, subpolicy 1.5, and that would take effect immediately. And then, action B would be to conduct the first reading of the ordinance, which would do the variety of changes that we've covered tonight. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions council might have.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kasten?
I guess first, for the public, in a sense, I think it's important for people to recognize how a lot of what we're proposing here, in a sense, was pre-baked as part of our commitment in the housing element, that there's, it's not that we're just proposing these items now off the tops of our heads, so to speak, that we've previously made for most, much of these, some sort of, we're basically following through on the previous housing element, but I don't want to testify. Can you elaborate, or have I already talked too much?
Councilmember Kasten, that's correct. Yeah, these are all commitments explicitly laid out in the housing element with either a 2024, I think in one instance, we committed to by February 2025, so we put it in this batch. But yeah, these are all commitments with a little bit of wiggle room, but really not a lot. We really committed to address all of these issues. And you see, like in the staff report and in the PowerPoint, we tried to always reference those explicit housing element subpolicies, because each one of these is specifically called out in the housing element.
Right, so those constraints, I think, are important to recognize for people who might wonder, who might not be enthusiastic about one thing or another. The one I wanted to raise is the open space one. And so right now, where the open space is included, it has, if you could turn to that slide, but where it has, we're adjusting the, or eliminating the proportion that is the common open space. And as I understand, the common open spaces, that's the shared, the communal open space, whereas the other, the restricted or private open space are things like porches and terraces and so forth. And in my view, that a, if I'm a developer, the value of the property is going to reflect the private open space that I provide. If a house or a condo or whatnot has a porch attached to it, it'll rent or sell for more. That isn't the same thing with the common open space, that you're not going to be able to rent it for more money because there's a common open space. And so without having any floor or any restriction, my expectation is that we will see a, developers push the private open space because they'll be able to rent their units for more money, and so we won't get common open space. And if it's our desire to see some common open space in any of these developments, then, you know, it won't happen. My suggestion, and I guess I'd like to hear what you guys think, is to retain, for instance, the 100-square-foot floor for common open space, but then give them the discretion about, you know, how they want to make up the additional 60, for instance, something like that. And guys, I'd like your take and so forth.
Thank you. I think that the issue with our mixed use is that we really don't have a lot, especially of conversions, and the sites are really constrained on some of them. Some of them, they're really narrow. Some of them, there's easements, there's a lot of parking requirements. And so if they were to convert a second floor, for example, it might be hard to get, depending on the design, common open space. It might be hard to get private open space. But for sure, they're going to, you know, try to get the units in to get both is potentially even more of a challenge. And so that's why we proposed it the way we did, so that whatever works on that site, in that site design, and gives them that flexibility. And I don't know if Andy wants to add to...
I mean, I guess to me, it strikes me that private open space is something that they might include or might not include based on the design that they have, but that they'll get their money back, just like adding an extra bathroom or something like that. They get their money back, and I just don't see, if we want to have, I don't think of it as the same way as open space. I think of it as more, just an amenity that goes with the apartment. You know, like a fireplace is delightful to have, a porch is nice to have. And anyway, I interrupted you, Andy, so, sorry.
Councilmember Kasten, I would just add, I mean, I think that could be the case. And I can speak from personal experience, I have an apartment without restricted, but I have a really nice pool in an internal courtyard. So that's a pretty significant amenity for my apartment complex, and that would be considered common open space. So I mean, it's tough to say with absolutes what would be the most beneficial, but we're also, for the developer, for the, you know, for the applicant, but we're also trying to be considerate of the flexibility and really trying to promote opens, I mean, promote mixed use and seeing some of those projects move forward. And so that was really staff's thinking on maintaining that flexibility.
Okay, those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Richards?
Thank you. Yeah, the question that I had was regarding the ESHM map changes, and you had mentioned that, so instead of updating ESHM maps as part of a general plan amendment for a specific project, that we would just undertake a periodic update every five years. I guess my question is, what information will be collected in order to inform that update every five years? I mean, will there be a citywide survey of all of our open spaces, or is it just, how will we know? You said based on available or new information. So I guess, how will we get that new information?
Councilmember Richards, one is, you know, we're still pretty small, so we know, like, we went into a citywide survey. That would not be the expectation. That would be an immense project to undertake every five years. It would be based on the new information that we kind of readily have available. So these projects where there was updated ESHM boundaries that were, you know, given the okay by Planning Commissioner City Council, we'd certainly compile those and track those. Other sources could be something like new bio surveys on Elwood that our open space division of Public Works did, or for city projects where we map, you know, ESHM along a creek corridor or something like that. So if there was like accessible data that we had readily available, we would incorporate those as well. But kind of a main driver, we would expect would be any projects where, that got approved with these updated ESHM boundaries on the site.
And I'll add in that we have an online permit tracking system, Magnet, that you're familiar with, and that, and you can put fields in there so that when there is an action to change the map, that whoever the decision-making body is, might be Planning Commission, it might be City Council, that then it would be flagged in the Magnet system so that when we do go every five years to update that map, we can, we can get those pretty systematically and transparently, and not about a memory, but about a log in the system.
I see. So would developers supply information, would we expect? Is that what we're thinking in terms of, you know, if someone wants to develop something, or they're thinking about developing something on a, on a land, a piece of land that has ESHM, and, you know, and they wanted to provide us, you know, with information if they, if they had done like a survey, would that be a way that we would get information? Or I guess I'm just trying to understand, what would the sources of that information be?
Yeah, Councilmember Richards, we have requirements for biological studies in our zoning code, and certainly if you have a site with mapped ESHM, we would require a biological study. And then when you look at the finding that will be required by the Planning Commissioner, City Council, whoever reviews that, there will have to be a bio study. And not only that, but Planning Commission added that it will have to be peer-reviewed by a city-appointed biologist. So they'll be submitted by a biologist typically hired by the applicant, but then every time will be reviewed by a city-appointed biologist. So when that comes forward, that, we'll have that study and that peer review for the decision-maker.
So instead of going through the general plan, so say someone's land, you know, has, is mapped ESHM, but they're disputing it. So instead of the current process where we would initiate a general plan amendment, and then, you know, a process that along with their application, what would the new one be then? So we would just, but if we hadn't updated it, like, so say, three years ago, are we going to wait two years until we update it again, or would it be updated as part of that process?
Councilmember Richards, we would process the project, and as part of the approval would be allowing the development with the updated ESHM boundaries, but without doing the general plan amendment. But then we would have that on file, and then staff would take that two years later, I think, if I got the timeline right, as part of kind of, what would essentially be like a cleanup, a general plan amendment to update the maps in the general plan.
Okay, so the city would incur that cost, or the, we would be responsible for that instead of having the developer be responsible for that part?
That's correct.
The processes would be essentially the same as it is now, but you just wouldn't get the general plan amendment initiation for factual change to the ESHM map, but the review and the findings and the noticing specific to an ESHM map change will remain the same, the process will remain the same.
Okay, thank you. I'm understanding it better. Appreciate it.
Mayor Bertrand Reyes Martin?
Thank you. I have a question about the 100% affordable streamlining. So I recognize that that's a pretty big carrot for a developer who may be interested in coming in with 100% affordable project. And I appreciate what seems to be kind of a compromise or middle of the road to say that that would only apply to the moderate or lower and not the work, not 100% workforce. I guess my question is, you know, having a housing project come through and be approved with ministerial approval is still something, I think, very new to us as a city, new to the public. You know, there's a lot of disagreement on that. So my question is, how flexible, how much flexibility do we have in implementing that, this piece of this? You know, I know that we're aware of a lot of projects that are eager to, you know, get started. So is this a piece that we could hold off on for, and see if we get, you know, projects that do meet those requirements for the lower and moderate before we kind of add this additional carrot? Is there... Is there flexibility on that?
The way the Housing Element program is written is very specific, and we didn't go more or we didn't go less. But remember that it has to be 100% affordable projects, and we don't have very many of those. And it's for multifamily, isn't it? It's for multifamily, multi-unit. So it's not to anything. It's specific to 100% affordable and for multi-unit. But, so to answer your question more directly, I have the Housing Element program. I'm looking at it right now, and there's... We stayed true to the direction in the program.
And so maybe to just be a little more specific, is this something we have to move forward with now? Or is it something we could implement in two years?
Councilmember Reyes Martin, the commitment is by December 2024, so that's why it's brought forward now.
Thank you. It was a question that I've had from the public about whether or not we could stagger some of these or if they all needed to happen now.
TECOM as well, I mean, we don't see projects like this. Even when we've had large affordable components to a project, it still wouldn't qualify like Villegos, Carneros, or Heritage Ridge because it is, neither one of those projects is 100% affordable. These are really rare. I mean, these would be your, like, it's hard to imagine a scenario where a for-profit housing developer would ever avail themselves of this process.
Yeah, we just caution us from the never say never. They're rare until they're here. And so I just want, you know, the public to really understand the why and, you know, why we're doing this, that a lot of this, you know, to Councilmember Casin, you know, is, for better or worse, you know, decisions that are not solely within our control with the state and ensuring we have a certified housing element. So just as much daylight, I appreciate, you know, this meeting tonight and really talking through so folks understand that it's a possibility. Yes, they're rare until they're not. And so that's, you know, one thing that I really wanted to ask, the question about whether it needed to happen now or we could wait. So I understood I have that response. My other question is related to the Planning Commission. So I noticed in the staff report, and I was able to watch most of the meeting, the recording, it was a split vote. So could staff please summarize what the issues were and why? You know, Planning Commission is a body that we really appreciate as an advisory body to the council, and I'd like to hear a little bit more about what that discussion was.
Sure, Councilmember Reyes Martin. The issue was the mixed-use open space amendments. And specifically, a desire by, to the Planning Commissioners to have a minimum requirement for common open space. Not necessarily for restricted, but at least some of that 160 square feet. They didn't, there was no objection to the numeric standard of 160 square feet, but there was a desire to have some common. And I think some of the conversation had to do with massing, however, you know, and breaking up the massing. However, I will note that common open space can be, doesn't necessarily break up the massing because you could have it on the outside of the buildings. You could have it in an internal courtyard. So it doesn't necessarily serve that function, but that was part of the discussion at Planning Commission. So it was really that one issue where there was an agreement with the Planning Commission.
I'm going to just jump in here real quick and ask, following up with Mayor Protam's question on when is this particular item due in December of 2024. What are the consequences of if we did not do that? I know there must be something that...
Well, I can attempt to answer that, and then perhaps the city attorney might want to add in. But we have to report at the end of the year, and we'll have to report that we didn't further this. And then typically, what the state might do is go, the purpose of this was, a purpose of this amendment was to support mixed-use development.
Right.
And did the city get any mixed-use development? And they might even go, and how much development did they do? How many houses did they bring online? And then that, those are the kinds of risks that we run, because they would first see that we didn't implement it, and then they would look that we didn't have mixed use. So if we did have a lot of mixed use, they might, maybe, I don't know.
So we don't know what the consequence would be?
Yeah, we don't know.
But we're doing, we have to do an annual report every year?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and this is, okay, got it. Thank you.
And the state is...
They mean business this time.
They mean business.
Yeah.
And I don't know if Mr. Rosen wants to elaborate, but...
I think the planning manager, Ms. Wells, has it correct. The state has really all enforcement tools at its disposal with respect to the status of the city's adopted housing element, which included the action items, and has taken a more aggressive role in recent years in terms of enforcing sort of the standards that were adopted as part of the housing element, including the timelines that are under discussion tonight.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Carrillo?
Just as a nursing sidebar, there's actually two cities in our county right now that don't have an adopted, approved housing element with the state. So I'm not sure what's happening there in terms of consequences for them, but I think it's a curious question. I wanted to follow up a little bit on the ESHA issue, the ESHA map change procedures. And this is really coming from the spirit of trying to make sure the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. So there are increasingly now state-allowed processes where you could get ministerial review, which never used to be the case. You still used to have local control. Now increasingly, the state is finding ways to set up scenarios where you could have a ministerial process for housing. And so I'm looking at the proposed changes to CE 1.5 to address HE 2.1J. And one of them is to maintain that only the Planning Commissioner or City Council, if the project would otherwise go to City Council, would have the authority to approve a project with ESHA boundaries that differ from those shown in the general map. So my question is, if someone were to approve a project that would be eligible for ministerial review, how would that requirement for the Planning Commission comport with a ministerial process? How would the ministerial project be able to go forward with a different ESHA boundary than what is mapped in our general plan?
Well, for starters, the ESHA is a factual, evidence-based finding, so it's not a subjective, personal opinion that's being stated. So that process wouldn't necessarily be considered discretionary by itself.
So does that mean they wouldn't be able to go forward with a ministerial project that differed with the map from what we have mapped? I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, so a ministerial project could still go to the Planning Commission.
If it was appealed.
Or ministerial projects go, like land use permits, for example.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, because there's people that are really concerned about ministerial projects and that there will be no environmental review, that there will be no opportunity for there to be a public process. So I just want to hear, for everyone in the audience to hear, even if you have a ministerial process, which is increasingly becoming common now, you can still have a requirement that the project go to the Planning Commission, regardless of whether or not they're trying to change ESHA boundaries or not.
Mayor and Councilmember Carrillo, I want to try and weigh in on this one. I think that in that situation, state law would override our local process. So if state law created a ministerial permit path that said, that said a project was approvable under a ministerial process, then we couldn't require that that project go to the Planning Commission. But then that project would not be able to change an ESHA boundary through the process that we laid out locally. So we would be bound by the state's process, but the project simply wouldn't be able to make the ESHA boundary.
So we'd be able to rely on the factual information that we had at the time?
Well, we would, so, I mean, we would still have to make findings of consistency with our general plan, including the conservation element, and that would include that we had protected and observed ESHA. But the ESHA, the determination of where the ESHA was would be, would be based on all the facts, including the map and the bio report.
Okay. I'm just trying to get clarity on this because, setting aside for the moment whether or not a project in the future tried to get approval ministerially or not, I can think of two sites in our housing element that have mapped ESHA. And I know we've changed some of our policies and ordinances to be more accommodating in terms of not penalizing a project for unit count based on areas that are in ESHA. In other words, they get the ability to come up with a number of units that's consistent with the parcel size as opposed to the non-mapped ESHA parcel size, right? So I'm just trying to make sure that I'm clear for the public that there are protections in terms of if developers want to encroach on ESHA and if it's a ministerial process, they may be able to go forward with the original map. Are they certain to be able to go forward with their own map? I just, I just...
Yeah, it's a great question, and we haven't encountered this, I think, in practice. But we would, again, we'd still have to, the decision-maker would have to make findings that the project was consistent with the conservation element, ESHA policies. In most instances, there probably wouldn't be much divergence between what was mapped and what was determined by the bio report. But at some level, the decision-maker would have to say, and if that's a staff-level determination, we would make that determination in the first instance, and we would look at the bio report and at the mapped ESHA, and we would require that the project observe the setbacks specified from the ESHA boundary.
Okay. My last question, and this goes back to the mixed-use, common open space versus private open space issue. If we're talking about mixed-use projects, mixed-use projects in different neighborhoods are going to mean different things. A mixed-use project in Old Town Galita might be a more outward-facing kind of a development where common open space might not necessarily be a courtyard or a pool. It might be a little plaza where people can gather and eat at one of the three or four restaurants contained within the development, or a place where there could be some public art. So is there, did we consider any carrots? And this may have been raised earlier, did we consider any carrots to try and incentivize people to go for a greater percentage or at least some common open space? Less focused on the timing of when we have to do this, but more, is there a way for us to, even as we're making this change as proposed, is there a way for us to try and incentivize folks to err on the side of the common open space so that there's more, not just resident benefit, but public benefit?
Councilmember Carrillo, we did not consider that. We considered kind of a more straightforward revision. We'd have to kind of better understand what that might look like, like in terms of an overall reduction in the requirement if a certain amount is common, you know, if that's the direction. We'd have to kind of look at what that language might exactly look like. But that's not something we thought about.
Yeah. I don't necessarily agree that developers would just default to it being all private open space, like porches and patios and balconies and that kind of thing. I can see the value proposition for a developer on a mixed-use project in particular, trying to create a public open space where people would want to actually gather and, you know, and eat or do other things that might actually generate more revenue for the businesses that are like on the lower floor, the second floor, depending on how the development's done. Okay, I just want to think about this a little bit more. I can see why the Planning Commission really struggled with this one. Thank you.
Yeah, well, just as an observation with respect to the common versus private open space. When we looked at and talked about the Hollister Village, oh, yay, these many years ago, there was a proposal at the time to count common open space as rooftop. And we rejected that explicitly because it didn't seem like that was the spirit of what we had in mind for common open space. And it just seems, you know, that same idea I have, that if we think common open space is a valuable addition to whether it's terraces or whether it's, whatever it is, grass, then I don't think it would be a challenging, challenging language to just retain some minimum for the common open space. But let me, there was a couple of other things I wanted to go to. And first, with respect to the affordables, 100% affordables. Currently, right now, I forgot, isn't there, whether it's Housing Accountability Act or Bonus Density, one of them also includes some sort of benefits or some sort of incentives for 100% affordable? And if so, I assume that would be combined with our process in a sense, thereby making that path much more attractive. Can you elaborate?
Councilmember Casin, certainly under density bonus, there's value to providing affordable housing, and then it escalates where there's kind of more value, the more affordable housing you're providing as a percentage of the project. So that's certainly the case.
So do they have one of their options as 100% affordable? And if so, is that moderate? Is that, I mean, you know, I guess this is getting at the idea, the question about whether this is something we would ever anticipate happening. It becomes much more likely if they're getting benefits or, you know, incentives from multiple sources, and they're getting concessions and so forth from bonus density, and they're getting extra housing from bonus density, and they're getting a ministerial review from this. You know, there's a point, I'm not saying it's, 100% affordable is pretty amazing stuff. So it's a trade-off, but I think we have to recognize, tell me if I'm wrong, that the likelihood is greater than the, you know, unicorn arriving kind of thing.
Yeah, and the city attorney might want to add to this, but it's certainly true. And even density bonus has added a moderate income category recently. Again, we don't expect these to be common, but probably more common than the arrival of a unicorn, I think is fair to say. But, yeah, we still, even with, like, those density bonus provisions, I mean, the incentives start when you're providing like 20% low-market rate. So there's already a lot of incentives at a much lower level than these, what we're talking about here with 100% affordable project. So the density bonus, at a much lower level, you get a lot of those incentives already.
Okay, so you're saying that the 100% level is, I don't know, there's not as much incentive for people to pursue that. They will have already gotten their benefits under bonus density, so they won't go there and therefore trigger this new ministerial pathway.
Yeah, Councilmember Casin, without having density bonus law, it's many pages long. But I'm not sure what the incentive, what the increased incentive once you hit 100% is offhand. But again, a lot of, you kick into that reduced parking down to one space per unit, and those concessions and waivers at a much lower percentage of low-market rate units.
Yeah, Councilmember Casin, just to add on to what Mr. Newkirk said. Yes, there are specific, greater incentives, concessions, waivers of development standards that are allowed for 100% affordable projects, excluding one manager's unit, with the idea being usually the manager lives on-site. But also to echo, so that is incentives that are by right under state density bonus law as sort of the floor, as what an applicant would be entitled to under state law. And then additionally, to echo what Mr. Newkirk said on that as well, it is difficult to finance a fully 100% affordable housing project because there isn't an offset of market rate unit. So I think it is true that generally there's quite a bit of funding that has to come together, usually a private-public partnership to actually make the project pencil out. So I think that is why it's, and to the Mayor Protam's point, absolutely never say never. So I think that is why it's, and to the Mayor Protam's point, absolutely never say never, and, and they're certainly possible, but generally it does require quite a bit of collaboration, usually between public agencies and affordable housing developers.
Okay. I just wanted to see if the combination was going to change the calculation. One last questions. Let's say there's a parcel, and I guess do they have to come up with a new map? This is going to the ESHA questions. Do they have to come up with a new map when they propose a development, or can they simply rely on the general plan? Or what, what triggers mapping and, and can it be an old map, you know, from 10 years ago or 20 years ago?
So Mayor and Councilmember Kasdan, we require as a submittal requirement, a biology, a biological report prepared by a licensed biologist. So that would determine what, what the facts on the ground are, and there are specific criteria for different types of ESHA as to what qualifies as ESHA. So that report would delineate where ESHA was on a site.
So it's a new, and it's got to be a new survey that's done?
Yes.
Okay. Cool. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a clarifying question with regard to the open space discussion and the common open space versus the private. Can you, can you clarify, the common doesn't necessarily mean public, is that right? I mean, so, because I, I know, for example, the, the villages, Hollister Village, when we approved that, we've required them to have some public. And so there's an area that, that is, you know, in the development that is public, but then there's a fence around it, and then there's also within the fence, a common area that is for only the residents. So with this requirement, common doesn't necessarily mean public, is that correct?
Councilmember Richards, that's correct. Yeah, we actually, in the definitions in common open space, we have in parentheses private, and the, the idea is that it's common, but really intended for common for the residents of that property and their guests. It is not intended necessarily to be available to the public.
Okay. I mean, I appreciated the, the suggestion earlier that, you know, in Old Town, it would be nice to have a plaza or an area that's gathering, but I, I don't see that, that we could require that to be a public space, that that would only, that, that would only be for the residents and not necessarily inviting non-residents into that area.
That's correct. So it, the definition doesn't say can't be open to the public, but it says it is intended for the residents and their guests, and it is the common, the open space standards, both restricted and common, are really intended as amenities for the residents of that property. That's kind of why the standard is created, was created.
Okay. So I appreciate the, like, the suggestion that maybe there, we could come up with some incentives to make it more attractive for developer to have it be public and to have the, the general public, you know, come onto the property, but these standards don't necessarily allow us to require them to make it a public space. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to go to the public. Let's see if they have questions.
I do have one speaker slip and one hand raised on Zoom. If any other members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. Our first speaker in person is April Reed.
public, I just wanted to say that he and Councilmember Kiryako, who's running out of the room right now, I'll put that on the record, told me for many, many months since July of 2023, when I found out that Kenwood Village is probably going to be rezoned, that there was no streamlining process, except through the state. And if you got all your zoning in and everything else, they would not have a streamlining process. So of course, I rely on that, and yes, it's in writing, you know, shake your head. Councilmember Kiryako, I've read your quotes, I have them in writing, although Mr. Kasdan's is much more explicit. So I was expressly told and asked not to violate type of appeal because you guys all wanted to pass this rezoning, and you were late doing it, which seemed to be late doing everything, and that I would have my opportunity to go through a lot of this stuff, like environmental, ESHA, public comment, and everything else, when the individual projects came up. I've read your quotes before here, I've posted them, I'm happy to do it again, but the only response I get from all of this is that the two of you think that it's funny that you're lying to the public, me in particular, and probably others, I'm just the only one saying it out loud. And every time I make a comment, the two of you have to make some sort of snide comment about what I have to say, like you think it's funny that you're getting away with lying to the public. So I can go on and on and on, but you all know what you said, and if you don't, I'd be happy to make the quotes public again.
Thank you.
And our next speaker on the Zoom webinar is Rachel Condor. If you can please accept the prompts that are going to be on your screen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Honorable City Councilmembers and Staff. My name is Rachel Condor, and I'm here representing the Environmental Defense Center and the Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council. We appreciate the city moving forward with its local coastal program development and adoption, which is related to this action since staff is proposing to amend, or for you to amend, the coastal land use plan. We support staff's recommendation to clarify that the city's ESHA regulation addresses impacts to all ESHA, not just what is mapped in the general plan. However, I'd like to raise three issues related to the changes proposed for ESHA mapping for the council to consider before adopting, adopting staff's recommendations. The proposal, first of all, the proposal to make ESHA boundary changes not a general plan amendment should be reconsidered. Any change to a general plan, including a change to a map, is an amendment to a general plan. Maps are a part of the city's general plan as adopted, and therefore, a general plan amendment is required under California Government Code Section 65358A. Moreover, the Code Section 65301.5 states that an amendment to a general plan is a legislative act and therefore must be carried out by a legislative body. So therefore, we feel that the city council may not delegate this decision to the planning commission. Lastly, the adoption of the new procedure for ESHA map revisions would limit the public's ability to understand and participate when ESHA maps are being changed at the city. We do understand the special noticing and findings as laid out in the PowerPoint presentation, but we still feel that this should be happening at the city council level. We urge the city to send this item back to staff for revision, and the city council should clarify that this only applies to inland areas of the city and postpone a decision on, on this applying in the coastal zone pending the outcome of the LCP adoption process. Thank you very much for your time, and have a pleasant evening.
Thank you.
We do have one additional hand raised, Brian Troutwine. If you can please accept the prompts that are going to be on your screen.
Good evening, Mayor Corley and councilmembers on Brian Troutwine, Senior Analyst and Watership Program Director with the Environmental Defense Center. I wanted to, first of all, support the comments just made by my colleague, Rachel Condor. And second, point out that we don't see a process for the public to request ESHA map The way it's being described, it sounds like only the project applicants can request changes to ESHA maps, which we suspect will generally be to remove or reduce the size of ESHAs. So we'd like some consideration as to how the broader public that has expertise can be involved in the ESHA map process and specifically identify and request the city consider areas of potential new, new ESHA for the map. Thank you very much for considering these comments.
Thank you.
And we have no additional public speakers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kasdan, do you have a question?
So first, for Ms. Reed, the, some of what you're, so everything that we have said, everything that I have submitted for, you know, in op-eds and so forth, has been my understanding of the issues at the time, and dare I say, the staff and others' issues at the time. So no one has ever presented something with the intention of misleading or intentionally deceiving anyone. But the, the main takeaway with what's happened is that what I have written about and said reflected kind of the usual process, the standard process by which housing projects were approved, and state law did change in the meantime. And so where I assumed no ministerial processes would occur at various points, and I was wrong, that things changed over time, state law changed, and our ability to, to control a lot of the processes and the decision-making were altered. So we don't know at this point how each of the various projects, including the one that you're most focused on, how these will proceed. A lot of it depends on the, the interests or the preferences of the developer, what sort of affordable levels, and all sorts of elements that are there. So we don't know with certainty what the process will look like for any of them, but it is different than what we anticipated it would be when, I know when I wrote my op-ed, for instance, and made comments on Nextdoor and elsewhere. And so, you know, it's unfortunate, but the state really, really wants to see housing proceed, and they've taken away our ability in many ways to make those choices. They've reduced our decision-making capacity, our ability to add requirements or studies or things like that, and as such, you know, that's where we are. So I'm sorry that you're not happy with where things are, and by and large, I'm not happy with having our, our authority sort of gutted, but it wasn't at any point that we wanted to mislead anyone. That was, everything that I've written before has been with the intention of explaining as I understood how the process would work. So, moving on. The, with respect to the ESHA, the report does suggest that it's a commitment that we've made, that we don't have the opportunity or the capacity to kind of send it back if, if we didn't like it. It says, your, the thing here says, we committed to amend the element to ensure that changes mapped ESHA are not treated as general plan amendments. In other words, have we already, going back to what we started with, have we already, this is going to Ms. Condor's comments, is this, you know, baked in? Have we already made this commitment?
That's correct. What you just read was almost exactly what's in the housing element, with the exception of the words "for development." And, and that kind of brings up that, you know, zoning is for the physical development. So that's why it's for applicants when they come in, and they want to do something on their property, and they see that there's ESHA that's in the general plan, and then they hire a biologist, which we would require that they do, to make sure that that ESHA is still there, or bigger, maybe bigger, maybe different. And, and then we go through the process, and we can still go through that process with ministerial review. It, it's not precluded, it just needs to be fact-based. And that's why, and, and then to the point about the, the ESHA, the, the ESHA locations are approximate, and, but it's the policies that drive what ESHAs are and what they are comprised of, and then it's the site-specific studies that, that can narrowly identify the locations.
And so the, and just to go to one of the points that was raised, that those biological studies are mandated at the time that somebody wants to submit a proposal, they can't just hope that the general plan requirements are locked in and they'll just avoid a biological study, that there's no, in a sense, advantage that a developer has over the members of the public as far as suggesting when to do a study, a biological study, that when you propose to go forward, you need a biological study.
Yeah, that, that's correct, and that it's unchanged from what it is now.
And one of the things that require, that triggers that requirement is the presence of ESHA on the site as it's mapped in the conservation element. So wherever there is mapped ESHA on a site, we require a biological study. And I think Rachel Condor's comments kind of confute two different things. In a permit process, we make findings of fact, they're in a quasi-judicial process, we're determining property rights in a, in the context of a permit process. That's not the same thing as a legislative action. The legislative action, the general plan amendment, would happen on a five-year basis, and that would be a separate action that would be based on a separate set of findings and a separate action that perforce would require the council to act. So in that context, of course, Rachel's right, the, the general plan amendment is a legislative action that, that needs, that needs the, the council to consider the facts before it, but we're not presupposing that action by making findings in the context of a permit process based on the, you know, what we think are the facts on the ground. So I, I don't think, the, the problem that she's raising, I don't think is a, is a real one. It, it would be if we were presuming to make a legislative action as part of the, the permit findings, but we're not.
Well, let's say something wasn't mapped in the general plan, but by, one could observe conditions of ESHA, there's hydrophytic soil, there's wetland plants, et cetera. Does that trigger the need for a biological survey?
Yes. So if there's any reason to think that there's, that there is ESHA on the ground, then we would, we would ask for a biological report, and ESHA can take many different forms. One form is, is the wetland. So a, a wetland that, that meets in the coastal zone, the one criterion definition, and in the inland area, the three criteria definition, then that, that has to be delineated by a biologist, and, and then the, the project has to observe the required setbacks from that ESHA, or is limited to development that's allowed within an ESHA. So we would still go through that process, and the better evidence is always the evidence, the, the current evidence that's in the biology report, not a broad-brush ESHA map. What's, what determines what ESHA is... What's, what determines what ESHA is, is fundamentally the facts on the ground, not what's on the conservation element map.
Okay, thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that. I did watch the planning commission's meeting and they were concerned on who hires the biologist. Is it the developer that hires the biologist or is it the city has, we don't have a city biologist. So how, what is the process for that?
Mayor Perotti, typically it would be the applicant would hire a biologist and the way the planning commission addressed that concern is putting explicitly in that finding that that biological report must, you can't approve a project without this, a city-appointed biologist peer review. So we would, and that would be at the applicant's cost, but we would, we would hire a biologist or appoint a biologist from our own, you know, our own discretion
Right.
to review that and, and make any comments or questions. And then the finding requires substantial evidence. So if the peer review calls into question the conclusions of the applicant-funded biological study, then that would be a question of whether there would actually be that substantial evidence to make the finding anymore.
Okay, so that would be in, in the written, there would be language.
And, and just procedurally, what, what staff would do would prepare a find, you know, the, the written finding or the written evidence to support that finding. And so staff would have to explain how that process worked, you know, the biological study would be an exhibit presumably, you would have an explanation of who peer reviewed it, what those conclusions were to support that, the decision-maker making the eventual finding.
Okay. Councilmember Kiriakko?
Thank you, Madam. Just a follow-up question on that point. How, how does our process account for the possibility of the way the property has been managed since it was previously mapped impacting the state of ESHA? In other words, if there's a biologist and they're going out, out there, regardless of whether or not there are, there are biologists or the developer's biologist and they see areas that had been previously matched, as I'll just give you an example, coastal sage scrub, and they don't see coastal sage scrub, the biology report would probably say, "No coastal sage scrub, this area is not ESHA anymore." So how does, how does the way a property owner maintains a property get captured in the, in the biology process and the mapping process? Because I don't think we want to reward developers for eradicating or allowing to diminish ESHAs so that they can then later argue there is no ESHA.
Certainly, Mayor.
So how do we, how do we square that circle?
So if, if a, a property owner at any point in time has to observe the protections in our conservation element, including protections of ESHA. So if a property owner goes out and plows under a, a wetland or coastal sage scrub or another form of habitat, then that's a violation of our, of our conservation element and our zoning ordinance and they would be subject to a compliance action and they'd have to restore it, probably at a ratio higher than what existed there. So if there was evidence that that had happened in the context of a permit action, for example, through historic aerial photographs or through other, other indications previously and, and the conservation element map could be one piece of that evidence, then that would result in, in an enforcement action. One of the findings that we have to make before we approve a permit is that there are no, there are no violations on the property. And so that would have to be resolved in the course of that permit action. And that's how I think we reconcile that concern. So we certainly do not want to create an incentive in tacitly or in any other way to allow destruction of ESHA, for sure.
So in a process where, you know, our general plan was last updated in like 2006 and then 2008, there were some changes. It's now 2024, almost 2025. A lot of time has gone by since perhaps some of these parcels have been mapped. How would you have any evidence, how would you be able to prove with evidence that someone deliberately plowed over, as you say, you know, an ESHA or filled in a wetland? I mean, if you're relying on, on really, really old, old photographs and you don't have like a more up-to-date biological stuff.
I think it's a, that's a factual question.
How would you, how would you figure that out?
Right, that, that's a factual question for a biologist. There could be a number of different sources. For example, we have a, we have regular aerial photographs, every, updated, as well as every two years, at a very fine scale, that we participate with other jurisdictions in the county on, so we have that record to look to. There may be other, there's often prior biological studies that have been prepared, but that would be a factual question for the biologist and then for the finder of fact in the context of that permit action.
Thank you, that's really helpful because I, I know the, some of these questions have come up with, you know, Heritage Ridge and some other developments we've had in the past, so, thank you, that's helpful.
Okay, not seeing any more questions. Then I think I will close the public testimony portion of the hearing and entertain council deliberation.
Yeah. So with respect to the common open space question, you guys have potential language that's an alternative to what's in here right now for us to consider? Have you?
We, we do have, I believe, a simple draft language if there's support for that, if, if the council wishes to go in that direction.
I'm looking at council.
Oh, could we?
To see their support.
Are you able to show it? I was thinking you would show it, is that?
What was the, could you show us the language? You have it written out somewhere.
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll pull it up right now and it's simply to add in a requirement for common and private open space.
So, Mayor Perotti, it might, it's going to be a little hard to read on this screen. What, what could be done pretty simply, particularly on this section B, where, subsection B, which is where 40% or more of the mixed use is proposed for residential, would be just to add in, what you're seeing in black text is what's in the proposed ordinance. So this red text would be added language. And so out of that 160 with a minimum of, and we didn't presume to propose a percentage exactly, but some percent of all required open space provided as common. So it would be, you know, out of that 160, if it was 50%, it'd be 80 square feet would be required to be common. But again, we didn't presume to suggest an exact number there. That would be for council to give us direction on.
And right now, the current number would be whatever 100 over 160 is? Thank you very much. Okay, so that we would, you know, start at that as a potential and then we can talk about whether 50 is more, easier, more attractive, et cetera. But I would, I would suggest this, this change.
Councilmember Richards?
I just had a question with this suggestion. Is there a reason that you would frame it in terms of a percentage of the overall common or, of open space versus a flat number or a minimum number? Like, for example, what we had now is 100 square feet, you know, to say that it's a minimum of 160 square feet total with at least 100 square feet of common space? I mean, I was just wondering if there was a rationale for choosing a percentage versus a flat number.
Councilmember Richards, it, it could go either way. This was just kind of drafted up quickly as a, a point of discussion and consideration.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I will say that I did watch the planning commission's meeting and I think they struggled with this one. You know, we're really, really lucky. We have incredibly talented planning commissioners that know this inside and out. And so when there's, I think the reason we're struggling, for me anyways, when there's not a full, you know, consensus on a particular item. I, I'm not sure on the fly, I mean, you've come up with this language, but I'm, I'm not sure I'm prepared to make a change. It was three to two on the planning commission, so I'm kind of having a hard time with this one.
I mean, we could lower it. Right now, it's, as was, as our city manager pointed out, it's 62.5. We could make a minimum of 50%. And that makes it more attractive than current, but still preserves some potential for open space, common open space for the residents.
Councilmember Kiriakko?
I'm wondering if it would be helpful to try and engage with state HCD in a, in another, hopefully kind of truncated iterative process, to try and just kind of take their temperature on how, you know, dug in they are on some of these issues. Because I don't necessarily, necessarily see a huge nexus between these changes, the kinds of changes we might be more comfortable with and an impact on housing production. And I think that's a lot of what they're concerned about. So I'm, I'm wondering if perhaps it would be helpful to just engage with them and just, you know, let them know that, you know, our council, you know, put a lot of, and our community put a lot of time and effort into our community plan and our zoning ordinance and the housing element process. And we're just having a little bit of difficulty with a couple of these issues. I would throw the ESHA mapping in with the, the open space issue, the common open space versus private open space issue. And, and just try and get it, to try and take their temperature, like how would they respond to a more eased-back set of requirements here?
Mayor and council, I would just caution taking too much of an approach in that direction because we do have a certified housing element and that certification was based in part on the policy promises that we made. So I would, I would hesitate to do anything that reopens that. And if we go back to HCD now and essentially ask them to revisit certain of the policy commitments we made, we, we could open up a can of worms.
Okay. I would just note that I could think of at least two jurisdictions in this county that don't have a certified housing element right now and I'm not aware of any penalties that they have endured. Or is staff aware of any penalties?
Well, they're subject to builder's remedy for one, which we're, we're now across the finish line on. So we wouldn't want to reopen that. And I, I think Mr. Rosen alluded earlier to certain jurisdictions where HCD threatened decertification or actually did conditionally decertify when the jurisdiction didn't meet in a timely fashion the policy promises it had made in its housing element. So I'm very hesitant to go down that path. That, that could be a big work effort for us and, and might not be the direction we want to go.
Okay. Okay, I'll withdraw it. Thank you.
I would propose that we keep the staff's recommendation and I'm, I'm not prepared to make any changes. Councilmember Kasdan? Oh, yes, it's on.
So does anyone else support the, the idea of common open space, some sort of minimum as opposed to a bunch of porches? I'm surprised, actually, to be honest, that we made, we were emphatic about it when we had the, you know, no rooftop. And I'm surprised that we're, that people don't want it, but.
I'm going to also close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I have just another comment. You know, I just, I appreciate Councilmember Kiriakko's point. I think we, we all feel some level of discomfort with a lot of this and I think we, of course, have the urge or at least the question to say, you know, how much can we push back? How much can we say, you know, can we pause? Can we do this or that? But I think to Director Imhoff's point, it's a pretty big gamble for us to do that. We see, you know, some of the other jurisdictions now faced with builder's remedy projects, which I think no one wants to see happen. And it's just really unfortunate that we don't have a lot of options to be able to push back on that. And I, for one, at least, I'm not willing to risk a certified housing element. I mean, it took us so long to, to get to that point and the negative implications of that, I think, would be pretty disastrous for us. So I appreciate though, that, that questioning.
Councilmember Kiriakko?
I just want to thank Mayor Protem Reyes Martin for making that point. I think about what happened in Santa Monica with 12-story buildings on the coast and other, other jurisdictions that tried to get too creative in how they address their housing needs. So I, I agree with you. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll speak to Councilmember Kiriakko's, I'm sorry, Kasdan's suggestion. And I, I'm very torn with it. I think I am kind of falling on the staff recommendation that's here before us, but I, I hear your concern and I, and I appreciate it. And I think, I guess where I'm, where I am is that I'm not convinced that, that this will mean that a, a developer wouldn't put any common open space in a, in a development that they have. I don't know that. I don't think that that's clear to me. I think that a developer will put a mix of private and common space that will, you know, make it more attractive for their residents in any way. You know, whether it's a pool that is common area or other amenities that are common versus balconies or patios that are private. I, I'm not su, it's not clear to me that that's what that would mean. So I guess that's where I'm, you know, kind of waffling because it, I, I, I don't know that I want to be more directive and more restrictive about how they choose to fulfill their open space requirements in that way. So that's where I am.
Entertains anybody to like make a motion? Let's see where it goes. No one wants to make a motion.
I, I guess, I guess I will try, try the motion. I think the long silence is a, gives you a sense of how unenthusiastic we are about this. I'll move that we, A, adopt resolution number 24 next in line entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Guelita, California, Amending Conservation Element Subpolicy CE 1.5 of the General Plan/C coastal Land Use Plan to Implement Housing Element 2023 through 202031, Subprogram HE 2.1J, Case Number 21-0002-GPA. B, Introduce and Conduct First Reading by Title Only and Waive Further Reading of Ordinance Number 24, Next in Line, Entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Guelita, California, Adopting Various Amendments to Title 17 (Zoning) of the Guelita Municipal Code to Implement the Housing Element 2023 through 2031 and Finding the Amendments to be Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, Case Number 24-0003-ORD."
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Kiriakko?
Aye.
Councilmember Kasdan?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porrez Martin?
Aye.
And Mayor Perotti?
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Five-minute break.
We ready? Blake? Okay, we're going to bring this meeting back to order.
Our next item is Item D1, Capital Projects Debt Financing Update.
Thank you. Mr. Rio?
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, council members and members of the public. My presentation tonight will provide a very high-level, comprehensive update on the status of debt financing for our key capital projects, outline the next steps for securing funding. And additionally, we just want to help ensure the city council fully understands the fiscal impacts of debt obligations on the city's general fund and Measure A revenue streams. So this presentation will cover the general background of the projects we are looking to debt finance, clarify the financing strategies we are recommending, and also discuss those fiscal impacts, and then the next steps in the process. So there will be another meeting on December 3rd where we'll be joined with our entire financing team to discuss more of the technical details. But this, again, is just a high-level overview of our recommended strategy. This slide here, going to start off with a little bit of background on how we got here. So over the past year, the city council and staff have been working to address funding gaps of our priority capital projects. This process initially began back in October 2023 when the city council received a presentation and update on the CIP projects, which included updated cost information based on the latest bidding data at the time. The update also included outlining a list of short-term solutions along with long-term solutions. Since then, we've conducted multiple workshops, budget hearings, and then formed the Galita Facilities Financing Authority to help streamline the financing process. Just really want to emphasize that these projects are not new projects. They've been part of our long-term capital improvement program. The financing strategy we're discussing tonight stems from these workshops and budget hearings, and again, with the formation of the Galita Facilities Financing Authority. This is really a measured, measured approach to ensure financial stability while addressing these urgent community project needs. This next slide is a summary of our financing team and kind of the behind-the-scenes of who's all involved. Again, you'll, you'll get a chance to meet them and, and have a more in-depth discussion about the financing on December 3rd. But there is various parties that are involved in pursuing this, the recommended debt financing strategy. Now, I just want to recap here. These are on the priority projects. Again, the main focus was on the annual work program projects and the must-do projects that were identified with grant deadlines. Each project was reviewed by type, future use, the useful life, the source of funds, and the timing of funding when it's needed. So the two main projects we're trying to fund here is the Cathedral Oaks crib wall repair project and the San Jose Creek multipurpose path for the northern and southern segments. There was initial funding analysis that was developed in the CIP budget workshop, and then we got direction to work with the financing team and then come up with the most cost-effective approach. And so there's a screenshot of what was presented back in, at the budget workshop for the CIP back in, I believe, April. So this next slide is a snapshot of the first project here, the Cathedral Oaks crib wall repair project, very high-level summary. This project is essential to maintaining road safety along Cathedral Oaks Road. Storm damage has compromised the road's integrity that has led to closures during the wet periods. The total project cost is about 17.8 million with about 15.5 million unfunded. I just want to kind of highlight here about the dates that are listed here. These are estimates, so they are subject to change, along with the financing amounts, but these are reasonable estimates. So again, the total financing amount needed is about 15.5 million. The project status is that the final design is in progress. And we also have staff with us from Public Works that is also able to answer any detailed questions about the projects as well. So if council has anything, feel free to interrupt. Do not mind. The next project here is the San Jose Creek multipurpose. So this is a high-level summary. This is the multipurpose path project. It's a critical link to our regional active transportation network. This project cost estimate is about 48.76 million. The financing amount needed is about 19.2 million. There is a large grant that's associated with this project, and it must be awarded for construction before September 2025. So getting into the recommended financing strategies. So when we consider these two types of financing strategies, our greatest priority was to evaluate the lowest cost of capital, ensure high credit quality, assure access to credit markets, and then also really preserve the financial flexibility, specifically with the general fund and our physical assets. So we'll be proposing two types of issuances to address these funding gaps. That is the first one listed here, the sales tax revenue bonds, and then the second one in the column here, the lease revenue bonds. And so what this table shows is kind of a side-by-side comparison, and then the estimated net proceeds by each type, and then how these types of finance, debt financing strategies will be structured. Again, we'll get into more details on December 3rd, but just kind of wanted to set that stage and kind of give a high-level overview of what this financing would look like. Again, in this table, though, there's a lot of assumptions being made in terms of the, the, the interest rates and also the debt service payments. These were based on market conditions back in August. And so we'll have updated information at the December 3rd meeting. And then I wanted to, to point out here, the Galita Facilities Financing Authority, just to, to kind of give council a little bit more background about how this, this entity that we've created will function in this financing, this financing strategy. So the, the financing authority is needed to facilitate this financing process in terms of doing, issuing bonds without going back to voters. So it's working within our own means. It enables the city to issue these revenue bonds and then also maintain full control through the city council on, on how these, these bonds are structured and issued, as long as govern, serving as the governing board. And then our city staff will handle the operations and administrations. This is very similar to the structure we had with the former Galita RDA, redevelopment agency. And again, this approach was to ensure local control and also financial flexibility. So again, more information about this will be provided on December 3rd. Though if city council has more questions about the facilities financing authority, you know, we encourage you to reach out to us and then we can get back to you, you know, by the next time we meet on December 3rd. And then getting into the fiscal impacts of, of the budget. So, you know, debt financing is a huge deal. You are committing, you know, a significant amount of money over a 30-year period to make these annual debt service payments, thanks to the new 1% transaction and use tax, as well as the conclusion of our RDA settlement payment of about 775,000. We can afford these debt payments without compromising other programs. The funding levels, though, of the current budget will most likely have to stay status quo. And so that's kind of what we've been forecasting or projecting. The general fund, when we go to, if, if we do pursue debt financing, the general fund will need to provide for approximately $1 million annually in lease payments for a period of over 30 years. And, you know, prior, you know, and really have to emphasize that we have to prioritize the debt service payments before programming the rest of the budget. And this is really, you know, again, something that we can afford in the long run, but also it does reduce the ability to, you know, program additional funding for other, for other items in the future. So again, this also sets that stage for our future budget outlook.
Mr. Rio, Councilmember Richards has a question.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I had a question about that figure, the $1 million in annual debt payments. Two slides back, I, I thought it had a higher number, so maybe I read it wrong. The, the column there where it says estimated annual debt service, it, it says it has 1.5 million, then 1.07 million. It looks like a total of 2.5 million. Can you clarify that? Am I looking at the right numbers here?
Yes. No, that's, that's a good question there. So the way, the, the number, so the, the way this table is set up is that the sales tax revenue bonds, that 1.51 million. So that's going to be pledged with Measure A funds. And so that's specifically tied to a, a special revenue fund. That's for transportation purposes. And then the second table here, the under lease revenue bonds, the 1.07 million, that's the general fund portion.
Okay. Oh, so the 1 million that you referred to on the other slide is only from general fund, general fund?
That's correct. Yep.
Thank you.
So again, if we were to pursue debt financing and then with the general fund, the upcoming two-year budget will, will need to remain status quo. And then any types of increases will have to be evaluated case by case. Again, any program enhancements, increased funding, additional personnel will need to have an offsetting expenditure or permanent decrease elsewhere in the budget so we can ensure that, you know, we can make these annual debt service payments and ensure also the, you know, our, our overall budget is sustainable. And that leads me to this next slide, and this is just a high-level overview.
Just a quick question. Those Department of, the DOF payments that you have at about 800,000, those are from the general fund or those are from a special fund?
General fund.
General fund. So the change to our general fund is on the order of, like, we'll have to come up with an additional about $200,000 compared to where we are now because we're already making that 800 annually?
Right. Hypothetically, yeah, that's, that's exactly. And that's, you know, with, with the increased revenues overall, you know, with the addition of the transaction and use tax, the overall general fund is able to, to support the debt service payment.
Right. But for our burden, for instance, in the next budget cycle is, we'll have an additional 200,000 to figure out as opposed to a million?
Yeah, hypothetically, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this, this table here is just a snapshot, very high-level overview, just showing what are beginning fund balances for the general fund over the next five years, what we're projecting, the estimated total ongoing revenues, ongoing expenditures, the one-time expenditures, and then what in red there, what the annual debt service payment would look like, and then what our total expenditures with annual debt service looks like, and then the net changed of fund balance, and then our ending fund balance. Now, that ending fund balance number is a very, you know, critical number to ensure, you know, financial health and a measure of financial stability in the long run. So as long as you don't see that number decreasing, you know, that's really means that you have a stabilized budget over the long term. So again, very high-level summary, factors in what the annual debt service payments would look like. These are early revenue projections, though, I want to point at, point that out, fiscal year '25, '26, 51.4 million. It's going to be further refined in the coming months when we start the new two-year budget process. Very conservative assumptions, property tax, again, we assume the 2% CPI annual increase, small growth and assessed valuations in future years. TOT just assumes the current supply of hotel rooms and occupancy levels. So there is no consideration of any new hotels. I should point out, too, there's no consideration of either short-term rentals. We do not rely on short-term rental TOT tax for our projections because of how volatile they are. Sales tax and transaction use tax relatively flat over the long term. So again, revenue growth is about, on average, 2.7%. The expenditures, we, we've, again, a very conservative approach with the expenditure assumptions, labor, it factors in all labor costs and contract adjustments, and then also that one-time capital-related cost of 2.6 million. So you do see that one-time expenditure, that very large amount. That is kind of money we've already programmed that was needed from the general fund for some of the capital improvement projects.
Councilmember Kiriakko has a question.
I just also want to confirm, you're not assuming any cannabis revenue as part of these projections? Since you're, if you're talking about funds that are volatile, that one's been pretty volatile, too.
Yeah, we, so that's a great question. We, we reduced our cannabis tax revenues assumptions. If you recall, we used to estimate about 1.5 to 2 million. It's around 500 to 600,000. It's still lower than what we It's still lower than what we actually receive, but it.
Okay. So you, so you, you are considering cannabis revenue, you're just being conservative about it?
Right. That's correct, because we do have a baseline of retail stores and that contribute a significant amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and then, again, with the expenditures, it does assume one hundred percent full employment. So that's something also that we always consider. And, you know, in a real-life scenario, that's not necessarily always true. And so there is possibility for one-time savings going forward. And the idea is that if there are, we would continue to prioritize the one-time savings or any additional revenue set aside for continued pavement or concrete maintenance, along with any other CIP. And so that is a strategy we're looking at to implement here. Then again, the ending fund balance, very important number. And again, this is a forecast, it is not the budget, and so, you know, it is a plan, a long-range planning tool. So then when we go through the budget cycle, city council will actually adopt a final budget. So moving on to the next slide, this is on the Measure A program of projects. So this is the one, this would be part of the sales tax revenue bonds. The good thing about this type of strategy here is that using Measure A funds, you're not tying up the general fund. But, and, and also, you're, you're able to pledge these sales tax revenues, specifically the transportation-related projects, with also without having to encumber a physical asset that's tied to the debt financing. It's actually secured and pledged by the revenue stream itself, whereas with the general fund, we do have to, you know, utilize a physical leased asset. So for, with Measure A, we're going to be recommending about one point three to one point five million annually for debt service. This will leave about, you know, a million-dollar balance for pavement maintenance and alternative transportation projects. You know, it, there is also a limitation on this. This, this type of strategy does have to shorten its term, because Measure A does sunset in two thousand forty. So, you know, that, that's also some, a consideration there.
Just an observation. The, one, the one point three to one point five million is, is, we'll clarify when you say it's a million balance for pavement maintenance and alternative transportation as opposed to, what, what does that mean that you're describing there? How much is this?
Yeah, so that's, that's a great question. So with our Measure A local share allocation is about, you know, between two point three to two point five million annually. Annually, then we have to take a program of projects. Public Works will take a program of projects to city council, and there will be funding that has to be programmed towards street-related projects, but also an alternative transportation, budget program for alternative transportation projects.
Okay, but this doesn't, for instance, since we are going to be backfilling as far as the general fund, this doesn't preclude us from using the general fund for projects that are, that we identify as priorities, including alternative transportation and pavement?
Can you repeat that one more time?
That part of the, part of this whole.
I was just going to say, I think I understand the question.
Okay.
If I may. So I understand the question as this commitment does not in any way adversely affect us from applying other funds that we have towards pavement and so forth. We still can provide, we can still, counsel, when they approve the budget, can still allocate general fund to maintenance and some of the other sources, gas tax that we use. This is just Measure A. And so that's how I took your question. We're not precluded from using other funds for those means.
Right, and you have that reimbursement resolution that's going to free up the, right?
Right. Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. But then, just for scenario purposes, though, you know, again, we get about, you know, I'll use two point five million annually. There's a core amount of that that would still continue to fund those ongoing operating expenditures. That is historically been funded by Measure A. So that's your pavement maintenance, striping and signage, your street tree maintenance, traffic signal maintenance, and then also your median parkway maintenance. The caveat here, too, though, is that we do have to report, you know, report on this annually and still meet the ten percent alternative transportation requirement. Again, these projects are part of the Measure A POP, so these are all Measure A-eligible projects. There will be an updated Measure A and POP discussion or program of projects discussion scheduled in March and April of this upcoming year. And then I, you know, I thought I'd re-show this slide again just to see how we got here. And it's just a, you know, a good high-level summary of just what, what happened over the last, you know, ten years here. And this is, what this is showing is the construction cost index, the California Construction Cost Index. And this is a, these numbers were put together, you know, from the, from the Department of General Services, the State Department. But really, what it's showing is that in the last past ten years, cost of construction up fifty-nine percent. When you look at from pre-pandemic, up forty-seven percent. But then you can see it's, you know, construction cost inflation is starting to level out here, and it was up five percent compared to last year. And again, you know, we highlight what are the drivers of this inflation construction cost. And it will remain an ongoing challenge. I mean, these are the two, you know, these are the two projects we're looking to fund, but we still have a lot of other unfunded priorities. And so, you know, we, we will still be working on those and coming up with strategies or plans on how we, we can fund those. And then next steps. So this is an outline of next steps of getting these funding for the shovel-ready for projects. So December third, again, the city council and as acting as the Financing Authority will receive a presentation and training on federal securities law disclosure responsibilities from our bond and disclosure council. Then there'll be a separate public hearing item. Again, the city council Financing Authority will review and approve legal documents and then authorize the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds and lease revenue bonds. Then in January two thousand twenty-five, the staff and the financing team will be working to secure a credit rating from Standard and Poor's Global Ratings, which would help, you know, the cost of borrowing. And then also January twenty-first would be another city council Financing Authority item, which will be to review the preliminary official statement and then also receive an, the update on our bond credit rating, if it's available at that time. And then February two thousand twenty-five would be somewhat of the target date at the end of that month to finalize bond pricing, issue final official statements, and then target close by end of February. So this is, again, a tentative timeline, things can change. And then with that, we'll take any other questions that city council may have.
I, I want to ask you a question. I think, you know, I, I've heard from quite a few of our community members voicing concerns. And I, I can't understand their concerns of going into debt. But I want you to let me know, I want you to emphasize what we have tried. So let's talk about the crib wall. You know, that's on Cathedral Oaks, and it has a sinkhole. And we've had to close it before during rainy season, because we were very concerned that the roadway on Cathedral Oaks was compromised and that therefore was definitely a public safety issue. We have tried, and please refresh my memory, on how many different avenues to try funding for, for the crib wall? I know we tried FEMA, I know we've tried grants, and we've tried multiple.
Mayor Perotti, I can give you a little bit of history on that. We tried through FEMA in two thousand seventeen, HWA in two thousand seventeen, and we didn't, we didn't get those funding sources. And then we tried again in, in the two thousand twenty-two storm event. Because a new sinkhole was created, we were able to get reimbursed for that specific sinkhole with FEMA, with FEMA. And we're also looking at other alternatives for grants that we could possibly go after for that, for the crib wall. So that's kind of where we are with what we've tried.
And we've asked even our congressman, Carbo Hall, to come out and look at it, and there was just no funding at the federal level.
That's correct. We also asked for a grant through our congressman, and that was also not received.
So I guess the point I'm trying to make is that we have exhausted all possibilities for, at this point, for funding for something that is a major public safety concern.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my only question. Please.
Yeah, and I had a question with regard to the other project, the San Jose Creek Bike Project. So we had gotten, we had received a, a grant for eighteen million for that. And it says here that if we, and, and there's a deadline looming that, that we need to be out to bid or under construction within the next year. If we don't do that, have, have we received that eighteen million? So would that mean that we would have to pay it back, or how, how does that work?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Richards. We have not received the construction funding as a reimbursed grant. So we've received the award of the construction funding. But we have put in for, I want to say it's approximately two million for design and right-of-way. So that's the funding that's been spent to date. The construction has not been spent, therefore, we've not received it. So that would not be paid back.
Okay. But, but we would lose the, the rest of the grant itself, though, in terms of.
We would lose the rest of the grant and likely have to pay back the, the two million for design and right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Kiriakko?
Just a follow-up question on that point. The, the state of California's fiscal situation has changed a little bit since two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And I'm just wondering, based on how these funds are awarded, do we run the risk if the state continues to have fiscal challenges of having that reimbursement ever be delayed or reduced or otherwise impacted? You know, it's one thing to have the, the grant money and have to return it, you know, someday. And, and that's obviously something we wouldn't want to be put in a position of doing in terms of how that would impact our reputation. But if this is a reimbursement-driven process, I just want to be assured that we won't spend the money, and then the money is not there down the road, right? And I know there's no guarantees in life, but how, has an ATP grant ever been not funded after the fact, to our knowledge, or?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko, I'm not aware of one that has not received the reimbursement. There were ATP funding considerations that were made for future awards. They did reduce the pool of money this year. And there is a potential that they could reduce it further next year, but that's for the future cycles, so ones that have not been awarded. I was not, I believe that the ones that were awarded, that money was not touched.
Okay. And then the, there's a lot of work happening on the one oh one along that San Jose Creek Bridge. And part of the San Jose Creek path is going to go through there. Did we have to pay for Caltrans, pay Caltrans to do the work for us? That's going to lead to the bike path going under, or is that something that they, that they did for us?
That one, I believe, was an agreement that they performed the work. They performed sort of the foundational work, and we'll come back in and set the bike path. So it's kind of mutual.
Okay. And then a question for finance staff. So if, if we go forward with this, this borrowing, recognizing it's, it's guaranteed not by our Measure B sales tax, but guaranteed by, by Measure A revenues, what kind of flexibility does that, that give us in, on two fronts? One, the amount of time the money is sitting in the bank waiting to be spent after we borrowed it. And then, two, potential flexibility it might give us with the general fund if we do find ourselves in a position where we get a small grant or a, a good-sized grant to kind of help defer some of these costs, or heaven forbid, things even came in under budget, which I'm not going to bet on. What kind of flexibility would that give us in terms of the ability to free up general fund monies elsewhere or do other things?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kiriakko. So, yeah, so the, it really just depends, so like, like the scenario you, you just described, by adopting that reimbursement resolution, it, it essentially opened up a lot of flexibility in terms of where we could reimburse ourselves for already funding we've spent with the general fund or even Measure A and return those proceeds back to its respective fund, that then those proceeds are no longer considered debt proceeds, but can now be programmed, you know, back for, like with the general fund, for any, you know, future, for any, pretty much any future use. But again, if, you know, it just really depends. There's a couple, you know, things we're looking at. If it's unspent debt proceeds, just because of those additional revenues, you know, it would depend on council priorities, but we would be recommending that there are still other unfunded capital projects, and we would recommend those funds would go towards those types of capital projects.
And then the decision a few years back to go from renting the space and the entire facility that we, you know, we know as city hall today, to actually purchasing it and having it become a city asset, does that help us in any way as, as it comes to the amount of money that we have to borrow or the rate that we might get? I mean, in terms of having this building potentially as collateral as a city asset, how does that and the Measure B sales tax passing, how does that position us to be able to borrow in such a way where we're not paying a much higher cost for the money?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And, and, you know, to answer that, you know, any city that has a city hall that they own is considered, you know, the greatest asset. That's worth a lot. So in the staff report, we do mention that we are actually working on this deal to free up City Hall's IBank debt financing deal, so that we have City Hall to use as leverage and, and help, you know, be more attractive to investors to lower the cost of borrowing. So, you know, this, it's a great physical asset to have, and it really helps with the overall marketability of, of Galita.
And then having the measure, having the, the ongoing revenue from Measure B, the sales and use tax, how does that help us in terms of our ability to borrow this money for as cheap as possible?
It definitely adds, you know, you know, significant positive impact, you know, positive viewpoint on, you know, on Galita's finances, because now we've significantly increased our revenue stream in the long run. So, you know, we're viewed to have a very strong financial position by having that additional revenue stream.
So we're less risky?
Yeah, a lot less risky.
Okay. I think that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Will you, have you completed your report?
Yeah, so that was, pretty much concludes on, we were just, you know, just wanted to give a, kind of set the stage of what's coming up next. Again, allow city council to even, you know, digest some of this information. They, you know, if city council has any more questions either tonight or, you know, before December third. And again, we'll have a discussion in, in more detail on December third about the debt financing.
I had just a comment, not necessarily a question. I, I wanted to thank Mr. Rio and staff. You know, this is a really big deal, and I think we've heard from residents who have a lot of questions, who are really concerned. It's not a step that the city has taken before. So I really appreciate that we are taking this topic across several meetings. And I know it's also gone to the Finance Committee. So there have been lots of opportunities, not just for council, but for the public, to learn more about this, learn more about what it would mean. I think it has led to more and better questions to really understand. And, you know, these, these are, the two projects, I think, that are identified are, are the right ones. They are really large projects and really important. I think Mayor Perotti has talked so much about, that we all have, about the crib wall. That is just such a huge public safety project, and we just really need to get it done. You know, I, I'm glad you asked the question about all the other avenues we've tried. And I just don't think we can, we can really wait any longer. So I really just wanted to say that I appreciate staff. I know you've been working really hard behind the scenes with all this. And I think the report tonight and then the previous meetings gives us and the public a lot of information and background to understand what we're talking about. And I look forward to the future meetings to keep, keep learning more and for the public to keep sharing their input.
And Mayor, sorry to interrupt, we do have just a receive and file on this, but in case there was anyone from the public that did want to speak, in case there's any specific.
Yes, absolutely. That was my next question, if anybody from the public would like to speak.
We do have one paper speaker slip, and if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we will call on you. Our first speaker in person is Jennifer Smith.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor, Jennifer Smith, Galita resident. I appreciate the prioritization of the crib wall. It's absolutely critical and it just needs to be done. And I also appreciate all the information shared today. I think the public has questions about moving forward. How are we ensuring that that crib wall be maintained moving forward, once it's repaired? And then, my only other comment is just, you know, thinking about all the things, seeing if Measure A is committed here, you know, what's, what other things are not being done? Just an observation, but this is a complex topic. I do appreciate all of this information. It is helpful to know that RDA payment's coming to an end. And I think that makes it feel more feasible and that's helpful. But I think there's some questions about, okay, once these major projects are done, how are we building in that maintenance moving forward? Thank you.
Thank you for that. I mean, I know I have concerns about taking another, you know, if we move forward with this, taking another look at our list of priorities and maybe reevaluating because we're not going to be able to do them all. We have to be realistic. We're going to be taking care of two large projects that have to be done. I also look at the San Jose Creek multipurpose path as a safety issue. The folks in Old Town have not had an appropriate safe way to get to the other side of the freeway without, by walking or by bike. And they have to go over the Fairview Bridge. It's not very conducive to bikes or pedestrians. So this will give them a safe, not only is this a recreational opportunity, but it's also a way for that community to get to the other side of the north side. So, Councilmember Keston.
Yeah, I just thought I would observe just a few things. One is with respect to the crib wall. We, you know, we can't be just closing roads when it rains. I mean, that's just, you know, we're an industrial society. We can't have our roads inadequate to be able to handle rain. So it is, and apart from the risk or uncertainty of will it collapse or something like that? Or, you know, as well as the people swerving out of the bike path and because the crib wall isn't there. To me, that one is essentially kind of a no-brainer. When you add on top of that, that what we're borrowing there is our money. You know, it's not like this is a, it's the Measure A money that we're just taking from the future and spending it now. So it's not like we're going for something else. And as far as the San Jose Creek, I guess I would suggest that people think of it in terms of, as Councilmember Richards observed, we have $18 million in grant money that's attached to this. So we get, by advancing this project now, we get to keep the $18 million plus have the value, the use of that property or that area. The alternative would be to basically say, you know, we'll do layaway. And in 25 years, we'll do the project, in which case we don't get that benefit of using that, whether it's the safety issues or the, you know, the ability to cross from Old Town to Cai Real. That it's a, it really is a valuable and excellent project. You know, it's a challenging project financially, but this allows us to get there. We've already invested so much. It's not just our current City Council that is the ones who are making the decision. But since, how old is this project? I mean, when was this initiated in some, when were the first shoots?
Councilmember Keston, I believe this has been on the books for a while, but the application for the ATP was done in 2018.
Okay, well, then it's all us. Okay, but I guess, you know, as far as the question of, is this going to be too challenging? Is this going to be a hardship for us to manage? And I think it's quite clear, given the DOF payments and so forth that are ending, that it won't be. And we will get important, our most essential and important projects able to be completed in a timely fashion and not have to wait for it to happen in the future. And hopefully, our other important projects will take up during our next budget cycle. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kiriakko.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to everyone who came tonight for this item. And thank you to our staff for the excellent report and helping us to get here. I think, for me, the message tonight is that the days of deferring and delaying are over and our large capital priorities that are safety projects, that are legacy projects, need to be wound down and finished so that our public, that are expecting them can benefit from them. This is just, you know, this is just an example of essentialism in action. And sometimes, sometimes it's good to put aside some, a little bit of good money to ensure you don't lose future money and to help secure your future. And so I'm glad that we're doing that. And I think for the San Jose Creek project, I really do see that as being a project that benefits more than just Old Town. I think it benefits the whole city. I believe arguably, it's a project of regional benefit. It helps commuters, it helps people trying to enjoy active recreation. I think there's varying viewpoints on this. But I would argue that having a project like the San Jose Creek project is something that will enhance the quality of life of residents. And that ultimately has a positive impact on our property values for people who own their properties. And it enhances the quality of life for renters who pay a premium to be able to afford to live here without owning their property. So I think there's a lot of different benefits. It connects people for whom the Highway 101 functions more like a wall than anything else when it comes to getting across town, the opportunity to get to Galita Beach. It helps, I think it'll help a lot of different people. And then the crib wall is just fundamental. If we're going to be a city, if we're going to say that we come to work every day to look out and look for our residents, you can't just have a major arterial road be closed at the whim of Mother Nature. You know, we could talk about the history of the project. We could talk about why it was necessary and where we kind of sold a bill of goods at Cityhood with the condition of what we were given. But we're here now, it's our responsibility. I think we have to keep trying to get grants and get federal support, state support. We should be knocking on every door that we can. But the future cost of delay is not worth it. And the short-term impact of closures is not worth it. We have to, we have to go forward with this project. One thing I'm very happy for is, and this was alluded to by others, by picking these projects, you're picking projects that are shovel-ready, that are ready to go. And so there's not a lot of cost to the city where we're holding on to that money and waiting for it and waiting for the benefit. We'll get the benefit almost immediately because these projects will be able to be freed up and get going finally. And so I think the public seeing that, there will be benefit for them as well. So I'm very happy, you know, given that we're in, you know, the tough circumstances that we are, I'm happy that we're heading down the road towards making what I think is the right choice, which is to prioritize the necessary and vital public works that our community needs and expects.
Okay, does staff feel like you had enough? I know that we're not making, we're not doing a motion on this. Where, you were looking for any direction? Do you feel like you have the direction you need? Or is there something more that you'd need from us?
It was just an update. And if council had any other further direction, wanted us to look at something else. But again, I encourage councils, you know, to reach out if any other additional questions. Again, we'll have a more detailed discussion on December 3rd.
3rd, okay, all right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Item D2. Initial findings and recommendations on city information technology landscape and execution of Amendment Number 1 to Agreement Number 2024-041 with CU Technology Doing Business as Acorn Technology Services.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. For.
All right, good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Matt For. I'm the General Services Director. With me is Janet Bachelor. She's a management analyst in General Services. And she is taking a lead role in overseeing the contract with our managed service provider, Acorn. Just by way of background, on April 16th of this year, City Council approved a contract with Acorn Technology Services. And what I had stated to you is we had an exciting deliverable in that contract that after following a transition from our previous MSP synergy to Acorn, Acorn would come back and, for lack of a better term, give a kind of a first 100-day report to council. They would be conducting a 360-degree evaluation of our IT landscape and our posture on a whole number of components. They'd come back with a number of findings and recommendations. So I have to say I'm very excited about tonight. This is something I've been looking forward to doing for two and a half years. And so this is a culmination of a lot of work. And I'll just say at the onset, council, you chose the right vendor. We have the right partner. Things are going very well. And the IT posture in the city of Galita is dramatically different. We have made huge strides in the last five months. And so I'm excited to talk about that this evening. Okay, all right. So the items to be covered, we'll talk about the first 100-day accomplishments. Talk about one topic that we've spoken before, and that's governance. Governance is very, is just critical to IT from a security standpoint, from an efficiency standpoint. And so we'll talk about governance and policies and procedures that we've developed, but also that are still needed and policies that'll be coming to council in the near future for adoption. We'll talk a bit about risks and vulnerability assessment. We're, for obvious reasons, we're not going to go into detail about what we found, but we will speak about methodology. So you'll know how we evaluated risk. And then in the recommendations, we'll talk about some cybersecurity improvements. Organizational efficiencies. Finally, the recommendations for near-term investments over the next year or two that both staff and Acorn are recommending. That some you'll see tonight, a budget transfer request, and others will, you will see in the upcoming proposed budget from General Services. And finally, we're asking for authorization to purchase the next round of laptops and desktops. That's nothing new. We do that all the time. The big difference is we are remedying a bad practice. In the past, our MSP scoped and purchased all of our hardware. And the risk of that is that the city wasn't, the risk is that the city is not the title holder of that hardware. So we are intentionally bringing that and shining some transparency and some light on that because we're doing it right. You know, we're going to, we're going to purchase 40 new devices and we're going to, the city will be the unquestionable title holder of those devices from the get-go. So with that, I want to introduce the CEO of Acorn Technologies, Mr. Craig Woolness, who's going to talk a bit about what they've accomplished and what they've done.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much. It's an honor to be back here and it's a privilege to partner with the city. And thank you so much, Matt. It's been an eventful 100 days. We've been really busy. So we want to briefly go over some of the things that we've accomplished. And also on the line I have on the Zoom should be our President, Umar Ershad, and Lee Pongriffen, they are my, they're my emergency. They're here to answer questions or to help with questions, should you guys have any. Anyway, first 100 days. We've created a whole bunch of policies, super important, like Matt mentioned before, like we talked about governance. We've created 13 cybersecurity policies, 15 other policies in regards to backup. And we'll go over those a little bit more. We've created inventory management. This was something that, when we first started, the inventory was one thing, or was said was one thing. We found that it's another. It's now documented, it's accessible. We know what the story is, which means that we know how old they are. We know what that budget is for refreshing, so it becomes very predictable. We've made lots of headway into documentation. We have over 250 documents that's in a common database that's accessible to the city and is the ownership of the city. But it's something that we mutually work from to, in order to service your account. We've done a licensing audit. We've got all of that documented as well. We know what the city owns and this is good for compliance, right? Like you want to stay in compliance or else you can get fines and all sorts of other nasty things. We've done a vulnerability and risk audit. We've, and have recommendations to follow around that. We've created service delivery and infrastructure dashboards that's available to city staff. We've created and made a down payment on hardware standardization, right? So we have like, yeah, so we have the same type of hardware versus disparate hardware throughout the city, easier to support, easier to predict. We have 24-by-7-by-365 monitoring and management in place. As Matt mentioned, we replaced all of the old synergy-owned hardware, which is, which was a liability for the city. We've created a patch management policy and actually started implementing that as well. So machines and devices are getting patched. This is great for security. We're monitor, we have a monitoring and management policy in place. Incident management policy is in place. You know, knock on wood, if something goes wrong, there's now a playbook for what to happen, when and if that arises. And we have a backup and disaster, backup and disaster recovery policy in place. And we have started backing up and pushing to the cloud. So that protects against any kind of incident. And we've improved uptime on the corp yard and the community center camera system. That was just simply not functioning and that is now working. These are a little hard to read, so I'll just kind of talk you through them, these gauges. What they say is, if you look at the gauge, the one on the top right, these are our SLAs that we hold ourselves to and that the city holds us to. The first one is our resolution SLA. Our goal is to fix problems, 80% of the problems in four hours. You can see, as the meter indicates on the top right, we were doing pretty good. That's over the past three months. The gauge on the left says how we've been doing over the past month. So we're making steady improvement. The more we service the city, the better our service becomes. First-touch resolutions over the last three months. The goal is to, is to resolve as much as possible on the first touch. That's 90% is our resolution goal and we are, we have actually reached that. And the bottom metric is about engagement time. The average engagement time was about an hour. We've shaved that down now to a little over a half an hour. So making really good progress. As we get to know the city and as we get to know the processes and the people, the support becomes more fluid. So we're having a lot... You can adopt a piece of software that could be very insecure. That could result in some kind of, in some kind of, in some kind of attack. And so anyway, these are things that we have noticed, and we've created, we've already started making recommendations and plans to help protect against that. Critical policies have already been created, like patch management policies, as I mentioned before, monitoring and management, backup and disaster, and incident management policies. So we're making really good headway there. Risk and vulnerability assessment. So we do these risk assessments as per the NIST cybersecurity framework. This is the standard. It's the gold, the gold standard in the industry, and it's done by a combination of tools that we run on the network and analysis that our, that our engineers perform, and also by conversations and observations around the city. As Matt mentioned, we're not going to get into detail around this, but we did analysis around network vulnerabilities, intrusion risk, redundancies, single points of failure, data backup continuity, and PCI compliance around credit cards. So as I said, we're not going to go into detail around that, but we have a pretty good list of recommendations to help mitigate that risk and secure and protect the city. Organizational efficiencies. This, to me, is like the low-hanging fruit, right? How can we make, how can we get more out of what we have? And we found really good opportunities around this. First one, underutilized bandwidth. What that really means is you guys are paying for a big, like, internet pipe, like this big, but you have a firewall that's like this big. So it's like, you're just, you're not getting what you're paying for. So things like that, where we can just do a simple upgrade, will, will result in a great amount of efficiency there. This poor wireless around, around City Hall, that's, everyone's nodding, so, yeah, that's, that seems to be a no-brainer. This next one's a favorite. People work remotely these days. It's just a fact of life, and the phone system that we have doesn't allow for that. So this is going to be a great one because right now there are wonderful, wonderful phone systems out there that do everything you need them to do, and they're actually cheaper. So that's, that's a fun one. It's nice to save money where you can. And finally, we've recognized the need for a cohesive file storage system. Some guys are on Ignite, some people are on Teams, some people are on SharePoint. So we need to put a policy in place that unifies that and that has a training system in place to create efficiencies around that, so everyone knows where to go when they're looking for stuff.
Craig, I'm going to ask you to stay there. I'll finish off these slides, and then we'll get into questions. So, great news. You know, we finally have this very in-depth analysis and evaluation of our landscape. We'll go into the near-term investments that are recommended. These are recommended by city staff as well as Acorn. They're a mix of one-time and annual investments. One of the recommendations this evening is a budget transfer from the IT reserve to cover these one-time, one-time costs. And then we'll talk about the annual. But, you know, the one-time costs are about $101,000, and what you'll see are remedying those network vulnerabilities. A lot of that is just engineering. You know, that's reengineering our network. As Mr. Woolness said, we've already replaced about 75% of our network. The city firewall is coming next, and, but, but most of that is just engineering and some other behind-the-scenes expertise. You know, we've hired a deep bench to solve some of those, those vulnerabilities. Intrusion detection, I'm going to defer to Mr. Woolness in a second, but that's, those are really enhanced cybersecurity tools. You know, I've been an IT director in the past in another city. In the past, these advanced cybersecurity tools were, they were very much leading edge or bleeding edge, and very few cities had these, and now they're very much standard practice. And in a lot of cases, they're just requirements even for cybersecurity insurance. You know, they're just, they're becoming baseline. City Hall network and wireless upgrades, as we said, there's a lot of efficiency to be gained. We can move data a lot faster and better with, with more improved equipment and the way that we engineer the, the traffic of that data. The wireless network at, at City Hall, you know, we recabled the building last year. That was one of the things that, as part of the seismic retrofit, we went in and recabled it. We've got better cabling, but the wireless network still needs some help. Upgrading to Windows 11 is another one. That, that just benefits cybersecurity. The redundant networking connection, this is important for City Hall. You know, we, we noticed that our Cox internet connection flickers a lot, all the time. Some of that's related to the firewall. Some of that's, will be remedied by the network reengineering. Some of that's just the delivery by Cox. And so on a day-to-day basis, we would like to have a failover, and that's important for outages, it's important for flickers, it's important during natural disasters and emergencies when we're operating out of the EOC. It's just prudent for us to have some backup and redundancy. Backing up library devices, this is one that, you know, I think the, the library network has greatly improved since Acorns got here. We found a few machines that were, that really housed critical settings specific to the library and the black gold system that weren't on a backup, and we're getting those on a, on a backup system. As we mentioned, the telephone service for remote work, I didn't put a cost there because it may just be cost-neutral with a better provider. You know, the VoIP system options have gotten substantially better these days. And finally, there's a legal requirement that the city change its domain name from .org to .gov. And so we want to, you know, we've got a couple of years to do that. We'd just rather do that now and be safe, you know, just have it done. I think it makes sense. I'll go into the one-time things a bit more on the finance, but I do want to stop here because, as I said, about, there's about $100,000 in one-time expenses. It's about another $110,000 in the annual recommendations that you're seeing here. The lion's share of that has to do with, with cybersecurity. And Mr. Woolness, can you take a minute and talk about what those tools are?
Yeah, certainly. My favorite on this is the second one. It's intrusion detection and prevention. It's just the best bang for your buck. Anecdotally, we support nine, nine cities right now, and I probably should have come with how many have adopted it. I just thought of it. It's the lion's share of cities that adopt it. And knock on, you know, knock on wood, there are times when this, when, when this system is utilized, where an alert comes into, through the system, to our 24/7, knock to our system engineers, and they're able to get onto a server and stop an attack before, before it actually can affect any devices adversely. It's very important software. It's, and I'll say one more thing about it. Everyone knows what antivirus is, right? Like, something comes out, and then maybe a week later, the antivirus company, like, gets wind of it, they put it in their definitions. Maybe a week later, you get an update to that, and I guess you're safe. In today's environment, that doesn't really work anymore. So what this is, it's like a modern version of antivirus. It establishes a baseline. It looks to see what kind of activity is normal. Oh, John Smith accesses the finance folder. Great. So maybe two months later, when it sees somebody from Hong Kong is accessing, you know, an HR directory, it raises a red flag and shuts it down. It's much more proactive. So it's, it's really intelligent software. It's where kind of antivirus has gone. So we think it's really kind of baseline for protection for really all of our city partners. Wireless, are there any other, Windows 10 to Windows 11, very simply, Microsoft stopped supporting operating systems. And when they stopped supporting it, they stopped patching it. When they stopped patching it, they become vulnerable to hackers. So it really becomes like a must-have. It's, it's, we don't see it really as optional. Certainly, it is optional, but it really isn't, if that makes sense. Redundant network circuit, I'll add to that, to what Matt said, a redundant network circuit. As the city moves towards a VoIP phone system, a modern VoIP phone system, it's good to have two circuits because in case one goes down, you don't want the phones to go down either. So that's a, that's a really important thing to have.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for that. So, so you can see here, the one-time, that's the subject of tonight's recommendation. We're asking for a transfer of 100, about $101,000. This is not from the general fund. This is from an IT reserve. So it's already money that we've accumulated for these purposes. And what the broader picture is, you know, the, the one-time investments, the immediate investments, if, if council approves this transfer this evening, tomorrow, we sign a bunch of quotes, and we, we start making these changes immediately. The, you know, the subject of tonight is the, the one-time investments. Also, as I mentioned, the, the purchase of about 41 laptops and desktops as replacements. The subtotal is about $186,000. We have $35,000 already in the operating budget for this purpose, so the net transfer from reserves is $151,000 we're asking for. So the recommendation, I want to go into a bit, there is a, a contract amendment that is part of this. It's discussed in detail in the staff report. I can answer questions to it. I didn't go into it on this slide. It's, it's net neutral to the city. It just restructures where the workload is and aligns it with the compensation that we pay to Acorn, but the compensation, the cost of the city remains unchanged. So I can, I can take questions about that if you have it. Thirdly, to authorize the transfer, and fourthly, to authorize the purchase of those devices. And so that's all we have for you tonight, but it's a, this is a big day for us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Keston?
Yeah, a couple of things. So this one, I think, was obvious, but for people accessing in the library, foreshadowing for our next thing, but accessing the public black gold and other sort of library sources, are those somehow segregated so that they can't, if somebody goes to the wrong site, it can infect anything?
That's a good question. Did you want to, yeah, so what were you going to say?
I'll let you go first, and I'll take it.
So there, there is a certain amount of segregation. The library, much of the library equipment is owned by Black, what's the name of the?
Black Gold.
Black Gold, thank you. Black Gold. So that, they own and maintain that. However, all of the machines there, all of the computers there would have this intrusion detection software on it. So in that sense, it would be protected. Did I, what was?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if somebody were accessing their, I don't know what options they have in terms of those computers. They can surf on the internet, they can go to their email. So if they are, you know, downloading some phishing thing, or they're, you know, going somewhere, and there's other sorts of negative things, how isolated is the, are those computers?
Thank you, councilmember. I understand.
If, Craig, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and answer that question for the council member. Thank you, councilmember. This is Umar Ershad. With regards to the library network, yes, the library network is totally air-gapped. What it means is that whatever happens on the library network, it's not associated with the city's core network. So if I'm sitting on a library computer, I cannot access the city's, you know, data. So it is air-gapped.
Okay. A similar, an additional similar question is, for instance, I might access the, our email system from a variety of different sources. And, for instance, we don't receive some sort of virus protection on our home computers or other sorts of things. So how are we able to ensure that when, as, you know, we're vectors? How do we ensure that we're not by the diversity of different devices that people could be using to access the city's stuff?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, councilmember. So cybersecurity tools are like, it's like insurance. You can buy it and add it until, you know, until you're blue in the face. The idea is to hit the right balance, right? You can protect everything and everyone, but what we're trying to do is make recommendations that are sensible, that makes, that are, that are affordable as well. So to answer your question specifically, the tool that we're recommending actually does protect 0365 environment, which the city does have. So there is a level of protection at the, at the 0365 level. But you're right, if you're using a home computer, then you could potentially get ransomwared, but it won't hop up into 0365 and spread because we do have a layer of protection out of 0365 as part of the proposed solution.
So if I were to access some, access, use my home computer and download some sort of phishing thing or something, even on the city email, I accessed the city email and then reacted to something or other, it won't, it'll be caught by the city, maybe.
Counselmember, counselmember, if I may, yes, it can be caught if there is an intrusion detection and a prevention system in place. As of right now, Microsoft does provide, as part of Office 365, some security. If you have a, you know, malware on your email, Microsoft technology that we currently have will stop it. But let's say if you connect from home computer to a city's computer or a city's network through a VPN or, or, you know, through other measures, you could transfer the virus from your home computer to the city's network if we do not have the intrusion detection and prevention systems in place.
Okay. And so the, once we get that, that takes care of that problem?
Exactly. It's, it's the eyes and ears for the, for the security, cybersecurity team. What we want to do is, we want to, by using this software, we want to quickly identify an incoming attack. I'll give you an example of another city without naming the city. Very recently, in the middle of the night, an attack was launched out of Philippines, and our tool, the intrusion detection prevention tool, caught the alert. It stopped the hacker from logging into the network. It stopped the attacker from issuing commands to ransomware. It alerted our 24-by-7-by-365 SOC team, and in 18 minutes, we stopped the attack. Now, if that software wouldn't have been there, and if the hacker would have had, like, another hour on that system, they would have been able to encrypt all the systems, backups, networks, data, all of it. So like I was saying, this, you know, this software, this technology is the eyes and ears for the cybersecurity team to effectively stop incoming attacks.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there any questions from the public, public speakers?
I do not have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand, and we'll call on you. I have no hands raised.
Okay. Well, I, I will just personally say I've been, it's been a really good, great experience working with Acorn. I've had, I have a laptop that's issued by the city, and I could never figure out how to get it hooked up to my home printer. I know that sounds so simple, but it's because it wasn't simple. It, it took a process to do it. So it just made my life so much easier. So, so it's been really great working with your crew, very professional.
Appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'm happy to move recommendations A through D. I don't know if I have to read them all into the record.
That's sufficient. Councilmember, thank you. I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing done, roll call vote.
Any other questions? Is there any questions from the public, public speakers?
I do not have any speaker slips, but if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and we'll call on you. I have no hands raised.
Okay. Well, I will just personally say I've been, it's been a really good, great experience working with Acorn. I've had, I have a laptop that's issued by the city, and I could never figure out how to get it hooked up to my home printer. I know that sounds so simple, but it's because it wasn't simple. It took a process to do it. So it just made my life so much easier. So it's been really great working with your crew, very professional.
Appreciate that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'm happy to move recommendations A through D. I don't know if I have to read them all into the record.
That's sufficient. Councilmember, thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing done, roll call vote.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Richards?
Yes.
Councilmember Kiriakko?
Aye.
Councilmember Gaston?
Aye.
Mayor Bron Timpor Reyes Martin?
Aye.
And Mayor Brody?
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you so much. Thank you for, it's been very helpful. Thank you.
Our next item is item D3, options for the provision of temporary off-site library services during the library ADA safety and building improvement project.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, we can, let's start. So who's?
Are we taking any?
What?
Are we taking?
No, 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 no. He'll be right back. Who's going to start? Who's going to?
I will.
Mr. Four.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Matt Four, one with General Services. We're here tonight to continue the discussion on the options for temporary off-site library services during the library construction project. Once again, we have an ensemble cast with us. Joanne Plummer, the Neighborhood Services Director, Elizabeth Sausido, the Library Director, and then Jaime Valdez, the Assistant City Manager, among others. We've got other staff from both departments as well to answer questions. So just by way of background, quickly, in October of 2023, the city received a sizable grant from the California State Library to affect a number of improvements, infrastructure improvements to the library. A lot of them are upgrades to, or improvements to the Americans with Disability Act in terms of travel, path of travel, and restrooms. Also, modernization of other building systems, like the HVAC system, life safety, lighting, and some door and window replacements. And then on the outside, the deteriorated fascia and, and paint would be taken care of. As we said, last time we were here on October 1st, the project has a very tight timeline, you know? And so we have until June 30th of 2027 to completely finish the project. We're confident we can, estimating that the library will be closed for 18 to 24 months to accommodate construction, including the construction activities, as well as some time prior to construction and after to relocate materials and workstations and all kinds of things to an alternate location. That timeline also provides for a prudent time contingency on a 53-year-old building. And so, so we came to you on October 1st with a number of options for this temporary location. Council gave us homework to go and get additional information on three of those options. The first option was to provide library services from the Galita Community Center. And with that option, we would delay and postpone the Americans with Disability Act improvements project until after library construction. The second option was to provide library services from a new modular classroom that we would cite at the GCC. And the thought there was we would use that during the library construction and repurpose that modular to replace the aging modular units that are currently leased by Rainbow School. And the third option is to rent or lease commercial space. And so since October 1st, we've gone off and collected quite a bit of information on those, on those three options. We're going to speak in depth about two of those options this evening. The first is the continued use of the Galita Community Center. And the second is a lease, lease option space at 6500 Hollister. We're going to talk a lot about square footage tonight. And as we talk about those, we thought it would be helpful to provide some context, you know? So when we give square footage numbers, what do they mean? And so we put this table in on usable space, first for the library itself. You know, I think, what are we trying to accommodate in terms of the existing library that'll be closed? And then what, what do these other options provide? So the Galita Valley Library, if we look at circulation area, you know, where the stacks are, as well as staff workspace and space that's dedicated to the Friends of the Library, the square, the net square footage of the library is about 11,200 square feet or so. The Galita Community Center is about 2,880, and we'll show you how we derive these numbers in a bit. And then thirdly, 6500 Hollister offers about 2,560 square feet of space that, in each of these cases, when we say usable square, square footage, or for the exclusive use of this activity, that's what we're getting to. We'll also talk about programming space. We're going to go into a lot greater detail on what programming means. We'll talk about what kinds of programming, but for the area that's offered, we just want to ground that, ground you in those numbers. So programming space at the library is about 940 square feet. That really constitutes the multipurpose room, you know? So the multipurpose room itself is 940 square feet. And then we have these two very large numbers for the other options, and that's about 7,300 square feet that represents other space at the Galita Community Center and even in council chambers that we could use for programming. We're not going to put bookshelves in here. We're not, it's not going to be public circulation space, but we can offer a whole variety of programming, and we'll talk about how we might do that. So the first option that you asked us to go and study was, again, option one, it contemplates library services being offered at the Galita Community Center. Council expressed concerns with this option, that classrooms one, two, and three were too small. You know, they're too small to adequately serve as a temporary location. There were concerns stated that there was no HVAC system. We do have heating, I'll, I'll correct that, but the, but the air conditioning aspect was a concern, and, and the viability of using that location as a heating and cooling center. So we went off and looked at this option a little bit more. Just as an example, classroom four could be used for programming. You know, we could offer storytimes and do other programming for infants and toddlers and children's programming in classroom four, also on the west wing, just adjacent to classroom three. For larger events, things like the Star Wars Day and, you know, other bigger things, we could use the dining room, the auditorium. Other classrooms could be used for things like homework help, you know, just a wide variety, sort of a multi-prong approach of various programming options that could be offered out of the community center. Classrooms one, two, and three would still remain the public circulation, though that's, those would be dedicated to public circulation and then other programming, as we just described. For climate control, you know, we could, we do have heating, but we could put other fans in, you know, to move air. We had spoken about that last time. The, the critical part to that is it's subject to the electrical system. And we're, as I said before, we're working on that. You know, we're having an electrical engineer evaluate that and see what improvements we can make. And then the last bit, I made a mistake last time I was here. I continually told you that classrooms one, two, and three were about 2,900 square feet. I was wrong. They're more like 2,000 square feet. I was transposing the, the size of the modular unit, the classroom. So I apologize for that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. To provide a little bit of a visualization of what we had in mind for the option for services out of the community center, we prepared this tentative floor plan. And similar to the floor plan that we'll show for the site at 6500, our designs really prioritize three main areas, safety, access, and customer service. And so in looking at this diagram, this is classrooms one through three in the community center. And there's a key that highlights the different types of materials we envision putting into the space. In all of the different evaluations that we did for sites, we looked at maximizing the collection. That's something that we understand is a top priority, not only for our patrons immediately here in the Galita area, but also as part of the service area, we serve as part of County Zone Four, and then also an active member of the Black Gold Cooperative Library System. We want to make sure our collection is maximized to the fullest extent possible. And so you'll see a variety of different bookshelves coded on this floor plan. So really, looking at this space in the community center, we looked at the height of the walls and tentatively placed shelving throughout the three classrooms. The entrances are located to the left, so the three door diagrams would lead in from the main hallway, which we'll show on the, on the next slide in just a moment, that show how you could access this temporary library site. This is the entire public-facing area, so this would not include the staff area or the Friends of the Library area. This would all be dedicated to public access and service. In our diagrams, you'll notice that prominently in the middle is a service desk. It's very important for us to be available to meet our patrons' needs, similar to the layout at 500 North Fairview at our current library location. So we have clear line of sight throughout the facility. We're able to anticipate needs, provide support, and really be a resource for our staff expertise to assist patrons. Tentatively, in terms of where the different collections would be, we would envision, you know, having really readily available access to holds. That's something that our patrons have definitely come to be active users of, is being able to place items on hold, whether from our library or from another member library. So we would want to make sure the holds were readily accessible and that browsing was available for patrons, too. That's certainly a way that our community is accustomed to accessing information in addition to specific requests. The third classroom, A3 on the diagram, is what we envisioned for the children's area. So being able to have a dedicated space for our youngest patrons to continue to access the collection, to be able to have a space that is specific to their needs was something that we had in mind.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We wanted to show you this slide tonight to show you the variety of sizes and locations of the different classrooms and various programming opportunities at the community center in the main building. The right wing, A1, A2, and A3, would be where the library location is. On this slide, you can see there's a line between A1 and 2. That is an accordion door that can be left open to create the space entirely open. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. A4 is our primary dance room. It has mirrors on the walls. It has a nice floor. And when we walked in it to look at it for storytime or infant toddler, watching Elizabeth's face light up was just phenomenal because she could see it and see the kids playing around and, and enjoying that space. So we really identified A4 as, as really our, our younger patrons, to keep them close to the main library activity. But as Mr. Four mentioned, using the auditorium and dining room for our larger events, even with the hope of expanding some of those events to accommodate additional patrons. As well, on the, for other wing, we have the conference room for smaller groups, like our book club or our senior happy hour that we have at the library. We also have a multitude of classrooms if those programs get larger. Homework help can also be in these other spaces. Anywhere we add additional space, we do need to have staff. So we need to be creative about when we're doing programming so that we can maximize staff opportunities. And real, the, the point to seeing this slide is really to show you that our focus is on the wing on the right-hand side, just because that way staff is interchangeable and, and there. But when we do have other large activities, we have other opportunities to move throughout the building.
The second option, you also asked for additional information on, this was the modular units that the Galita Community Center, you know, when we, when we took out restrooms and food prep areas and some nonusable spaces, the net square footage is about 2,026 square feet. And under this scenario, the same programming, additional programming would be held in the community center building as, as was just described. This is an option that we are no longer recommending to council. We've done additional research on this and really looked at how this would intersect with the ADA project. When we first brought this to you on October 1st, we thought, well, we can cite the modular very far away from construction. You know, we can put it, you know, we can have a big buffer. When we looked at where site utility connections would be made and a whole number of things, it turns out that the place to put it is very close to the existing modular units, which is ground zero for the ADA project. And so for those reasons, we're taking this one off the table as a, as a recommendation from staff. And, you know, if we were to do this one, we would have to postpone the ADA project, which, which comes with a price tag in the form of construction cost inflation. And so we're withdrawing this from, from our own consideration. That said, this exercise was helpful, not so much for the library project itself, but in the context of the capital improvement budget. And so, you know, we had a, a rough estimate of $805,000. We went back and worked with the designer on that, and, you know, things like the HVAC system to be installed, the fire suppression system, that, that initial estimate did not include those really critical items, low voltage cabling, potential presence of asbestos. That was a big one. These are, these are really old, you know? These are 60-something years old. The demolition costs skyrocket when there's, when there's asbestos and the, you know, as well as the disposal cost. Much more extensive site preparation now that we know where it needs to go. You know, that's a, that's an area that's subject to ponding and flooding during rain. It's not so level. And so we don't have the refined costs yet. We know the missing pieces, but we will have those refined costs by the time that we bring the capital improvement budget to council in spring. And so that's really helpful. We're going to have refined numbers. There is a capital sheet for this, and, and we'll have better numbers as to what it would take to put this in. The last piece was the lead time. You know, we put this in the, in the prior staff report, but it could be six to nine months for design, manufacture, delivery, and installation. And so that's, that's a pretty, it's a pretty long timeline when we're, you know, when we're looking at a risk of delayed library services. So for all those reasons, we, we have taken this one off. The last option, option three, council had asked staff to go and look at a number of commercial lease opportunities. And so since October 1st, we visited and evaluated 10 of those. And we looked, and, you know, it's very similar to moving to a new city and you're looking to buy a house. It's what's out there, right? And so we looked at 10 potential lease sites. We visited five, and we spent a lot of time with five of those. The primary focus of those sites were sites that were move-in ready. You know, again, because process in government takes a long time, right? It takes a long time to get a space ready, even to do, you know, relatively minor work in terms of bidding work and getting, you know, soliciting bids and awarding contracts. So we were really looking at sites that were move-in ready, featured an HVAC system, had adequate parking, and then finally, were feasible under the library project timeline. You know, a, a site that was great, but it would take a year to get all the tenant improvements done was something that, that's not compatible with the timeline, right? And so that's the framework that we were looking for. So our recommendation, we're actually recommending a lease site, and this was a good exercise. And so we're recommending a, that you direct staff to pursue a lease at 6500 Hollister. That's the building that's directly south of us. You know, in fact, I think it was the original city hall for the city of Galita. It's close to city hall, that, you know, that's a, that's a great. It's close to City Hall. That, you know, that's a great benefit. It's hard to quantify. You know, we can't put a financial benefit to it, but certainly an efficiency benefit. To the extent that we are storing collection materials and other things on the second floor of City Hall, having this lease spot right here is really helpful. It features 2,560 square feet of exclusive space for the city. And I say exclusive space because elsewhere in the staff report, you'll see another number, which is 3,500 square feet. The difference in that is 2,500 square feet are for our exclusive use, but we would be leasing an additional 1,000 square feet or so that's for common areas. It's shared by all the tenants, you know, things like lobbies and restrooms and break rooms and things like that. This particular site would come with 10 dedicated parking spaces. However, there is ample street parking on both Los Carneros Way as well as Cremona. There's overflow parking at City Hall. There are two bus stops that are nearby, both just west and just east of this location. It's move-in ready. There are very minor modifications that would be needed to occupy. It's in very good shape. And lastly, you know, occupying this space would allow the ADA project at the community center to proceed. And so for those reasons, it's risen to the top. This is the location. You can see City Hall there in the background. And just bounded by Los Carneros Way and Hollister is this site. And you can, well, we'll get to this one. You can see this is the leasable space, this red-hatched area of Suite 100. This is the location that we would be looking to lease. You can see a couple of really great characteristics of this. First is there's this common area, this green area that says "common." There's a large entry lobby. It's very clear that you are entering this building directly from the parking lot. I mean, it is from an accessibility and intuitive direction. You know, if you park there, it's very obvious that that's a front entrance, and we'll mark that. Patrons walk into a very defined common lobby and then enter the leased space. So it's got a lot of intrinsic qualities there that we're interested in.
So to continue the discussion about this space in particular, as you enter in through the lobby, that door in this layout is located to the right. So you'd enter in through the lobby straight ahead and right into the front doors of what would be our temporary home in this scenario. Upon entering, you'll notice that again in this scenario, the service desk is positioned very close to the front entrance. Again, to be able to acquaint our patrons with a new layout, to anticipate needs, to ensure safety, and to maintain clear lines of sight to the highest degree possible throughout the public space. Again, you'll notice that there are different color-coded shelves, depending on the tentative heights of the various walls in the space, maximizing the collection, prioritizing areas of need for patrons. We're working with Black Gold already to determine how we might make determinations for which parts of the collection are moved into the temporary site, really looking at the data to make the most informed decisions possible for our community. We do also have an additional feature in this scenario that includes three distinct spaces, which you'll notice to the left. So tentatively, we've looked at having the largest area that has the seating in it to be a dedicated children's area. Again, really making sure that our families have a space where they can access materials for their children, for their young readers, to ensure that there's available access, to ensure that there's literacy support during this time, especially looking at those crucial years where those skills are being developed. We want to make sure that we have the collection in the space to access those spaces in mind. So that's something we're including in our design as well. The other two spaces could potentially be for children, or I'm sorry, for teens, for adults, and for holds pickups. But really looking at how, again, we can maximize the percentage of the collection that is available, also including very vital library services such as internet, computers, public printing, and Wi-Fi throughout the building. So we've met with Black Gold to ensure that at both sites, our networking will be feasible to bring over to the new site. And lastly, I wanted to point out that there is a dedicated space within this same, all within the same area for staff and friends of the library to continue to perform operations behind the scenes. So we have some dedicated staff area where we can continue to catalog new materials. We can check in returns. We can continue to keep those vital operations going behind the scenes as well as in our public service area.
So the council had asked us to have further communications with the Friends of the Galita Valley Library. And we had met with the Friends of the Library president to discuss the project as it relates to the closure of the Fairview Building and options for an alternative location during construction. The Friends of the Library did express concerns about the closure and also communicating that the membership of the Friends is just now returning to the pre-COVID levels. So the Friends did suffer during COVID and have been working hard to rebuild their membership, their contributions, and their donations and all their efforts. And they're just now getting there, so there is a strong feeling that closing the library will have an impact on that. So they're really concerned with the risk of the loss of momentum with yet another closure. City staff are committed to providing that space in each of the temporary locations for the Friends to maintain their volunteer hours, receive their materials or monetary donations, and accept memberships and process and inventory their donated sale items. So we'll continue to work with them and work with their space and see how we can continue to provide opportunities throughout our closure time and throughout our temporary relocation.
So in addition to our conversation with the Friends, we also reached out to the County of Santa Barbara to provide notice of the anticipated construction temporary site and to begin the conversation about impacts to service during construction. And so after providing notice, we will continue to keep this dialogue going with the team at the county, including providing a plan for the closure and modified services at the next County Library Advisory Committee meeting, which is scheduled for December. And then again, keeping them informed in the spring as our plans become more finite at the March 2025 meeting as well. And lastly, in follow-up from our initial meeting on October 1st, we also reached out to the Galita Union School District. And so we definitely shared the information with regards to the project, construction, closure, and our off-site library services to make sure that they were informed, but also to begin the conversation with the district about possible partnerships for collaboration and just ways to really keep those service levels high. And so we're looking forward to continuing, you know, that exploration of collaboration opportunities in the months to come.
And finally, council asked us to reach out to the grant manager, to the State Library's office, and inquire about an extension to the June 30th, 2027 deadline because it does reduce our options, right? It gives us less flexibility. The state librarian said extensions are rare. They generally consider them when a project is about one year from completion. And most often, it's for things like natural disasters or supply chain disruptions, you know, where a jurisdiction is well into a project and then something happens, right? And so but for that thing, we would be finished, but we need an extension. I asked him, well, what if it's just because we don't want to close the library? Because it's important to the community, because, you know, it's a big deal. And they said, well, that would actually constitute a change in scope, and that's a much higher bar. And so a change in scope would be elevated to the state librarian himself for consideration, and it takes about six months to get a decision. And so the risk of that is if we go that route and we ask for the scope change, if it's approved, great. If it's not, then we're six months into the project, and then we really won't make the June 30th, 2027 deadline. And so lastly, to talk about the costs associated with the two options. The first option on the left is the recommended option. That's the lease option of 6500 Hollister. The lease term, at least preliminarily, is $220,000 for the two years for a 24-month lease. We added for, you know, HVAC maintenance and janitorial and general maintenance of the site, some funding for that. Black Gold and IT infrastructure, this number we increased a bit because we met with Black Gold and Acorn quite extensively at that site. And the good news is both groups said, oh, yeah, we don't see any problem with servicing this building, but it'll take more work than what you estimated, first off. The other cost that we added was something that we footnoted on the first staff report. That was moving costs. And so we have been able to at least give an estimate of what we think it will take to move both out of the Galita Library branch as well as back in. And then kind of a small item, but we do have a mini elevator in City Hall. We have a dumbwaiter that goes from the first floor to the second that we would use to transport materials up so we're not, you know, breaking our backs climbing the stairs all the time. And so this option is about $440,000. The only caveat to that, we're not, we did inquire of the broker of the potential of subleasing additional parking spaces at 6500 Hollister. And so that might be an option. It's certainly something that if we're directed to pursue the lease, we'll take up. And so because that's an unknown, we're just saying that those additional parking spaces, if they are available, are not included in this cost as well as furniture. So we're going to try to move as much furniture and bookshelves and things over from the branch library to the new one. And, you know, the things either don't fit or don't make the move, then we will probably have to buy some things. The second ranked option is operating out of the Galita Community Center and postponing the ADA project. The only things that have changed on this, these costs have gone up by about $190,000 since we came to you last, largely accounted for by the moving costs, reactivating the dumbwaiter, and a little bit on IT. And so those are the only new things. The construction cost indexed estimate remains unchanged. So with that, we are asking council to direct us to pursue a lease at 6500 Hollister. That would involve making an overture to the owner and then trying to negotiate terms and coming back to council or providing us with alternate direction. And we threw a second recommendation in because we're here. And that is, in the last six weeks, in the last six weeks, because both of these facilities, the library and the Galita Community Center, are often used, not only as heating and cooling centers, or the desire is there, but also during natural disasters, right? We would like to harden those facilities and provide backup power. So we had a meeting with FEMA, and we are pursuing some other grant opportunities. We think it's a viable option. We think we could be competitive on a grant to try to secure backup power and whatever the electrical upgrades needed to support that. So we're asking for your authorization to go ahead and pursue those grants for both of those facilities, the library and the community center. And with that, we can take any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Well, one thing I was just wondering about is the 6500, I like the, you know, move-in quality and so forth. One thing I was wondering is if it were possible to supplement that with pieces from the community center, like without delaying the ADA project. So is it possible that using one of the classrooms or the modular? That, so what I was thinking is that, you know, for instance, I don't know if this makes sense, but that like the children's classroom could be separated to expand our total floor space. And then we have, let's say, a children's room at a modular place at the community center or one of the classrooms, if that were possible. And then the adult programming and the adult services are at the 6500. Is that an option or not really?
Councilmember Kazdin, splitting up the collection like you're describing was not a consideration. If our collection is split, then we would have to staff both locations. We would have to staff utilizing the community center as a program site, but those would be programmed out times that we could work around the ADA project once it starts because we will have some minor intermittent adjustments there as we move forward with that project. We are still planning, as you can see in the staff report and the presentation, to utilize classroom space at the community center, dining hall space, auditorium for some of those larger programs, as well as here in the council chambers. So we'll be, once we have direction and we know where we're going, then we'll be working with the library team to establish a schedule and figure out the best location. That also provides us the opportunity to provide library services to different parts of our community. If we were at 6500 for our collection, that is in this part. And then we could also do some level of programming actually in Old Town.
I would also add that Ms. Sastelo confirmed we'd have to have double networking as well for the information systems. We'd have to have double networking for Black Gold if we're going to actually check anything out or check anything back in. So if it was limited to the programming, that's different than having an actual circulation system.
Is it, I guess, the costs, I mean, how much? So is there the option of having space at the community center without delaying the ADA? And without it, because that was the biggest expense associated with the community center-related stuff. Is that, I mean, I realize you would have to put a staff person there and so forth, and that's potentially a big expense. Just curious.
Councilmember Kazdin, we are planning on the programming component. Again, we did not look at splitting it up for the reasons Ms. Sastelo said, as well as the staffing concerns. We are planning on utilizing the community center for different programming throughout the time that we're closed and as well as the City Hall Council Chambers. So for programming, we would do it even with the ADA project going on because the community center will still be open during the ADA project. There may be a day or two here and there that we might have to shift services, but we are planning on being open throughout the majority of the ADA project.
Okay, I'll stop there.
Mayor Burton? Thank you. I'll start with some questions, but thank you for the presentation. So we've had a lot of public comment and questions from the public. And I live in, you know, the neighborhood where the library is really close by. The number one question I've gotten is about the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond site. I drive by it every day. I look at it, and I think I had the same thought weeks ago and asked staff. So I know staff has really evaluated the feasibility of that option. So could you please share what we?
Sure. We spent a good amount of time. I have a very good relationship with the ownership group and the agents that represent that shopping center. So I was privy to information about what they're planning on doing. First and foremost, it's a 24,000-square-foot building with two sets of bathrooms immediately on the, what would be the north side of the building. So it doesn't lend itself to being split up very easily. It's designed to be a box store to be able to provide the type of retail environment that they have or a use that could use the whole facility. That said, I had asked, because that was one of our first thoughts, it's right nearby, it's big, it's got a lot of parking. And they had shared that there are negotiations with a national tenant. They wouldn't share with me who that is, but it does appear to be ongoing. The other part of it is for them to lease that space, they're looking for a 10-year commitment. We did ask, would you consider something else, you know, hey, you know, we're trying to help out the city, you know, the community. They said they might consider a five-year term, but that would be the lowest they would go. They would not consider two years. And they would only consider that five-year lease term if the city was willing to commit to at least leasing half of their space. So it just doesn't make economic sense for them to lease the space. But based on the, you know, the rep, you know, the items that we brought forth to them, they just flat out told us no. You know, I think it would be different if we would have said, we'll take the whole twenty-four-thousand square feet for ten years, they would have said yes, but as it stands, they said no.
I appreciate that. You know, I've had just a lot of interest and questions on that site, and I know that staff, you know, really looked into it. I was very persistent in asking as often as I could, you know, could they, you know, consider doing something just good for the city? You know, so it's, it was unfortunate and disappointing to hear the no, but I can understand that and appreciate staff's work to talk with them about that.
Sure.
And I recognize that that was not one, the only other site that was considered. You know, we didn't go through the full, you know, ten that were considered, but I know that staff really worked with a commercial broker to really try to identify anything that could be possible with this scenario, so I appreciate that. The other question I have is, could I hear a little bit more about the book van? So the city owns a book van, it is programmed primarily in Isla Vista. You know, I see that as an opportunity to expand availability of collections in different parts of the city, but of course, I'm thinking about my district and my neighborhood that's going to, you know, lose this very easy access to the library for eighteen to twenty-four months. And in particular, you know, I've heard from a lot of the residents at Encino Royale, which is a very active senior community, there's three hundred and sixty units there, they love being able to walk to the library, participate in the programming, but also the collections. So could you talk about any, your thoughts about the book van? That seems like a natural location to have the book van visit them with some frequency, but have you considered how you might use the book van during this temporary time?
So, well, I can start and I'll have Elizabeth, obviously, join me. Currently, right now, it's set at twenty hours per week with the intention of serving the Isla Vista community. So that does leave a fair amount of other time that it could be used for other locations, other types of settings. There is a certain amount of wear and tear that happens as you use it more. I don't think it's something that is prohibitive in any way, but there is a limit to it. I think the other things we're trying to do is, it's hard to kind of lay out plans when we don't know what the actual constraints will be, or the actual square footage is, or where. So is it easier to move, you know, a book van when we have materials here at sixty-five Hollister there to somewhere nearby here? Yes. The further you go out, it's a little more challenging, but I think there is an expectation to try to balance what we have and that there is a significant loss in space with how we actually go out and meet people where they are. That's a kind of a term that we've been hearing more and more. One thing Elizabeth shared with me over a year ago was that they wanted to do a better job of getting to the schools, right? And so these are all the things that have been kind of brewing, and Elizabeth talked to that a little bit more, but the idea would be, rather than being more focused on having a site at five-hundred North Fairview where people come to you, what can we be doing to be going out, right? And so this is a natural excuse, a natural fusion of where that could actually take place. I don't know. Elizabeth.
Most definitely. Thank you, Jaime. So to speak on our plans for ensuring access, that's something that's definitely been top of mind for the project team, I've heard from our library staff. It's definitely one of our current priorities, we want to make sure that we carry that into this temporary site as well. And so in sort of understanding that the square footage of the temporary site would most likely be lower than our current site, our initial thought was not to reduce our service, because we have seen and heard from our community that they have a need for and an interest in library service, and we anticipate that need and interest to remain high over the next two years and take construction, and then we return. And so how do we meet that need from a smaller space? So what we've begun to do, and which we'll continue to do following today's meeting, is we'll begin to explore opportunities to extend the reach of library services beyond the confines of any one physical space. And so what that means is definitely connecting with our community partners, such as the school district, areas where we know our patrons are visiting from, such as the junior high, such as Encino Royale, really to make sure that no one is left behind. We want to ensure that we continue our current path of creative problem solving to make sure that access remains high, to find ways to reach areas of our community that we're currently reaching, but potentially, as Jaime mentioned, what we have wanted to collaborate with more, and so this could be an opportunity to do so, because now we have a need that's greater than ever to make sure that we're really reaching all of our patrons here in our area. And so we've started, you know, coming up with tentative contacts to reach out to. So much is sort of dependent upon where we end up, and so following that authorization this evening, we do intend to dive into a really exciting portion of the planning, which will be identifying areas in our community where we will be sending staff for outreach. And just to add one final thought on outreach, is that we often think of outreach as the really incredible programming that libraries do, such as Storytimes in the Park, where you see hundreds of kids in a park, you know, shaking their sillies out and doing the hokey pokey and doing all of those great things, and that's fantastic. But it's also an opportunity for us to bring materials with us, to do library card signups. We have outreach laptops on the book van and at our branches, where you can take your library services outside of its walls into the community in more ways than programming alone. You can also continue to add circulation and library card registrations and, you know, information about our online services. But as you can tell, it's something I'm passionate about, so I'll stop myself there. But the wheels are definitely in motion to find those ways to make sure that service levels remain high during this time. Thank you.
I would also add too, and part of our analysis of the book van, I think well over a year ago, in Isla Vista in particular, the head and shoulders most used was the stop that stops at Friendship Manor. And it's like way off the charts compared to everywhere else. So we realized that that may be very analogous to the idea of Encino Royale and possibly other places where we have active seniors that want to use the, use the library services. So that's, thank you for pointing that out.
It's not working. No. Maybe it's just the light that's not working. There it is, okay. No, thank you, I appreciate that. I have a lot of confidence in your, Elizabeth, in your commitment to access and the creativity of you and your team. So I really appreciate that, and I look forward to hearing, you know, once we have identified the location, kind of what those plans are, and then making sure the public is really reassured that we're really going to do everything we can to make this temporary time period, you know, as successful as possible, and continue to remind everyone of all the important work that's going to happen at the library site to make it great for another fifty-plus years. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards.
Thank you. Well, one of my questions was already asked about Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, so thank you. Along those lines, though, I was curious, of the ten, there are a few other suggestions that came up that I was just wondering if we had considered, were the Santa Barbara Motorsports location on Chi Real, so that was considered? And what about Pier One in the Comino Real marketplace? Was that, was that one of the ones that was looked at?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Richards, I don't recall the Pier One, I don't believe we looked at that one. We looked at a number of sites, you know, again, it's the ones that were available, so we were really reliant on the broker to tell us which ones were feasibly accessible, you know, if we were to make a decision. You know, all of the sites that were not recommended were in large part because of the time it would take to make them ready. And we have tried to pour as much detail into as many options as we could get, but to come back to you with realistic timelines and costs for the other sites that were clearly not move-in ready. I'll just say that. All the other sites were clearly not move-in ready and would be substantial lifts and would likely result in long delays, you know, breaks in library service. And so that's why they did not rise to the top of a recommendation for us.
Okay, great, thank you. And I don't need you to go into the full analysis of each one about why they weren't, so I appreciate that, that our staff has done its due diligence in that matter at least. And then my other question actually was for the little add-on that you mentioned about the generator. And I guess my question along those lines is, have we looked at doing battery, a battery storage project instead of a generator? I'm assuming a generator would be diesel and dirty and other things. Have we looked at other ways of providing additional backup energy?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Richards, conceptually, yes. You know, conceptually, we're always looking, we've looked at all of the city facilities for solar potential and battery storage. It's just a long way off. You know, it's going to take a long time to get there, and so in comparison, it doesn't mean we can't do both. I mean, I think the, in comparison to the cost and the lift, installing emergency backup power is a relatively easy thing to do and would harden those facilities and make them usable in fairly short order. And the grant opportunities we were looking at were, you know, seventy-five percent cost coverage, right? So a really good deal for the city. The city of Galita has a very good reputation with FEMA now, you know, specifically on the Hazard Mitigation Grant. They were very pleased with our management of the seismic retrofit, and they were very proactively helpful in helping us identify some opportunities for the emergency backup generator. So I think along a continuum, it would be prudent, in my opinion, to pursue the backup power now with the transfer switch, and then nothing precludes us from solar and battery further down that road.
So I'm not even necessarily talking about solar, although that's another good option as well, but even just battery storage as an alternative to a generator. I know when we looked at, when we installed our solar here and we were looking at a battery storage project to go along with it at the time, what we were told was, well, we have a generator already that the city invested a good amount of money into that was going to last another ten or more years. And so I guess my concern would be to not go down a path, you know, of getting a generator, getting something that we will want to replace soon, you know, thereafter, and so that, I don't want it to become a reason why we don't get a battery storage project then later. And I do know that there's a lot of grants for battery storage now, you know, even without the solar. So I would just encourage us to at least look into that as an option, because I would much rather, you know, prefer to go that direction than to go into a battery, to go into a diesel generator. Thank you.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I kind of want to go back to the book van a little bit. So, you know, I appreciate the response that we received from the standpoint of, you know, we would look at different things, but we're concerned about wear and tear. I kind of just feel that when we're talking about such a significant change in level of service to an entire section of town from what they were accustomed to, I think it's really incumbent upon us, and maybe it doesn't have to be tonight, because we're going to be revisiting this again with more finality, but I would be really interested in finding a way to get more of a definite sense of what programming would look like for the neighborhoods that are north of the 101. Encino Royale was mentioned, I would throw in Maravilla. Coming back south of 101, I would also mention Westmont out by Elwood, the senior center that's over there. And I guess the question that I would ask is, if it, if, how confident are we that we could deliver programming at sites like that without needing the book van? And if we can't really deliver rich programming, if we can deliver rich programming without the book van, what would that look like? Because there's a cost to it, right? So, you know, we're not agendized to talk about the library budget and how expenditures and Measure L and all those kinds of things. So I'll just say, for the record, I'm very interested in making sure, you know, if we need to utilize Measure L or other sources, I'm very interested in providing a budgetary assurance that a high level of programming will remain that is accessible to some of these different neighborhoods that have become accustomed to having library services at their front door. You know, there are people that have been going to that library for thirty, forty years, and it's a big change. And there are young people, the people that live in my district, but they go there after school, because there aren't really schools in my district so much. So that's really where they go, and they're, you know, they're already going there, and it's close to the school that they're attending. So it is a big disruption, and I would just like to make sure that we have some level of assurance, and budgetary is probably the best way to do it, that level of service will remain for those areas in terms of programming. In terms, you know, I think about the book van in terms of being an assurance of some kind of collection. You can work with Black Gold, what are the most popular titles? What would be the most popular titles segregated out by age groups, those kinds of things. So it seems like we should have access to that data, so let's use it. So that's more of a comment than a question. I also wanted to just kind of ask a little bit about the new space, the sixty-five-hundred space, which I've toured, and I really appreciated staff showing that to us. One thing I like about that location is it's close to not one, but two disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged areas, the community of Old Town, Galita, and the community of Isla Vista. I think people sometimes forget that we serve everybody from the eastern Galita Valley to Isla Vista to Galita, all the way up to Beelton, Solving, and Gaviota. So we have, we have a pretty big responsibility. So can you, can you give us a sense of, with this temporary space, not accounting so much for City Hall and the other spaces, how does the space that you've looked at and are recommending compare to some maybe other neighboring communities and the libraries they have? I'm thinking Solving, I'm thinking Carpinteria as being two other communities of, you know, a certain, you know, substantial population that rely on library services. How would this space compare from like a square foot usable space perspective?
Thank you, Councilmember Carrillo. In looking at the square footage of some of our other libraries in the Black Gold Cooperative and also within the county library region, there are a number of branch libraries that compare very closely, such as our Solving branch, which is about two thousand square feet. But in looking at the data, the site that compares most closely is also an independent jurisdiction, which is Carpinteria Community Library. Their library is about three thousand square feet. And in my personal and professional experience working at a smaller library, before my time at Galita, I can attest firsthand and also with the testimonies from my colleagues at smaller libraries, that tiny libraries are mighty. That's something that they really pride themselves on. And so when looking at potentially smaller space, you know, how can that be an advantage? So in looking at the ways that we're able to interact with our patrons to really tailor our services to their needs, that's certainly one advantage. Another is really in bringing the community in through those outreach efforts. That's something that a lot of smaller libraries tend to utilize as a way to expand their reach in the community. If the, if the physical site is smaller, bringing your library services out into the community then has this incredibly, just so satisfying effect that you'll do an outreach event in the morning, and that afternoon, you'll see those kindergartners in the library with their parents. It's just, it's what every library worker wants to see. Or if you visit a campus, or if you visit a senior community, or if you, sometimes when we're at other city events, you know, we'll see, we'll have a table at an event such as, you know, our event, the State of the City event, we were one of many tabling divisions. We saw patrons and they said, oh, could I get a library card? We said, we're doing library card registrations right here, let's get you one right now. And then they came in the following week, or if you give them a calendar, then they see, oh, I can bring my child to your Star Wars event, I can, oh, you have a craft, I can bring in my mother-in-law. And so it's this really great way to increase that engagement by going out into the community to really sort of intensify, and I'm looking for the right word, but to really multiply, that's the word, to multiply our efforts in the community, and then to bring those members of the community in. And so those are some strategies that smaller libraries do use. I know that the Carpinteria Community Library is beloved by their patrons, and they do an incredible array of services. Many of them are tailored to the specific needs of their community, who, you know, the city librarian in Carpinteria engages with her community members, looks for grant opportunities to meet those needs, and really exercises a lot of professional creativity in their approach there that I admire. their approach there that I, that I admire. And libraries are all about sharing materials, but we're all about sharing information with one another to help, to help one another as colleagues. And so the library community is very supportive of sharing successes so that we can learn from one another and bring the success of another local smaller library to our services so that when we are temporarily working from a smaller square footage, that we can look at those successes and see how we can bring them into our community here in Galita. So I hope that that helps to provide a little bit of context for where we're, where we're hoping to aim.
It, it does because I think contractually and morally, I think we have an obligation to function like, like other zone libraries do. And so I'm really assured to hear that we can do that both within the context of a smaller, more accessible collection space, but also with the opportunities that we have to do programming here, some of the other locations. And I imagine, you know, if you're living, you know, you know, there's, there's hundreds of residents that live over the villages of Los Carneros or at Willow Springs or at the People's Self-Help Housing Project, Casas Los Carneros, or even just over at, at Stork Ranch, that, you know, suddenly library services is a much more convenient thing for them. And I don't want to, in my sadness that some people will be temporarily losing the convenience of a library around the corner, I don't also, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that for many residents, this would be a new opportunity as well to, to experience direct library programming and collections firsthand from a walkability, bikeability or transit accessible space. So thank you so much for your quick and creative thinking and for everyone from Mr. For and Ms. Plummer and, and Mr. Valdez, all the work that you've, you've done on this. I appreciate how you've all kind of teamed up and worked together on this.
Well, I'll be brief because a lot of questions are already, and I'm sure the public would like to speak to this. You know, I was very, I, I, many of, I think all the council members were able to tour the 6500 Hollister and I was quite impressed with what I saw. Yes, it's smaller, but Elizabeth, you came up with some really creative ideas on how to reach out. And one idea was the book van, of course, and then another idea was working with the schools and doing something on the school site after school. Because that was my question to you is like there, I mean, there are a lot of students that come from Galita Valley Junior High and do classes after school or not classes, but homework and that's, you know, maybe that's where they go after school. I know my husband was one of those, you know, he's born and raised here and that's, you know, fondly remembers going to the library after school. So you were gonna, you're going to keep track of or find out how many students were coming? And I'm, I don't expect that you have the number tonight, but are you going to still kind of pursue and see like how many students are coming after school? And the population that's coming there, you must know a lot of them, I'm sure, they're regulars and where are they exactly coming from? But I like what Councilmember Carrillo just said, that you, you'll get a different group, possibly of folks coming from a different area. But I know my, my, the other set of grandparents that live off pretty close to 154 and they often pick up the grandchildren and go to the Galita Library just because they, so people do drive to different locations depending on what you're offering and what's happening. So are you, have you talked to the school a little bit about, or are you going to be pursuing that once you know exactly what's happening?
Thank you for those questions. Yes, so we have initiated conversation with the school district, with the superintendent, Dr. Mary Kahn, and we're scheduling a further conversation to take place in a couple of weeks. And so we have initiated the conversation and then we're looking to set up a formal meeting with a couple of team members from the district as well as a couple of team members from the library to formally start sort of mapping out what those options might look like and hearing what their needs are as a significant patron base that we serve. And then to speak to your point about sort of getting a sense of our current usage at the library. So as all of the, the public libraries in the, the state do, we track our data very carefully. And so it's something that we've, or become very accustomed to that we track attendance at our programs. We take just, you know, totals of attendance and we, you know, are, are keeping an eye on statistics year round. Those are reported up to the state, to the, the annual public library survey. But in addition to that, in the context of the project, we've been keeping a really close eye on usage, you know, in the facility, really paying attention to, you know, what are the current needs of the, of the patrons who are visiting already? How do we continue those needs? How do we account for them in a potentially smaller space? And then definitely looking at those usage, usage patterns. So we know that there are certain groups of, of students who come over to play certain games, you know, on our patios and who meet up with one another after school. So we have been sort of just paying extra close attention to that. We're, we're used to keeping track of data, but it, we feel it's more important now than ever to look at how many cars are in the parking lot on a given day at a certain time? You know, how, how are the, the trends coming? When is the after-school rush? You know, how, how does our usage get impacted? So we're keeping an eye on that and we'll continue to do so.
All right, thank you.
Just a quick, yeah. So I guess two things. One is you had mentioned the after-school, the kids coming over. I think you told me previously to play Dungeons and Dragons. And I guess, you know, I think it's, I, that we, and you have indicated you're going to be really flexible and creative and looking for sites and looking for places outside. So it could be that there's, whether in the school itself or other look, you know, in the junior high that is, or something else, that there's a, a space where we can recognize. And you said you're going to be talking with them, but I, I think that's great to, to look for, you know, it might be in, in the Taco Bell or something that we can have a space for them, but to be creative in terms of, you know, where there are, are options. But the, the, and the other thing I was just going to suggest is that if there's an advantage or there, there is some way that, let's say Kelly Hoover might help if you wanted enhanced outreach to the public or something like that to find out about needs. And maybe you've already talked with her, maybe there, I don't know if there, if it's advantageous or not, but if there, if that would help, you know, in some way, anyway, let's take advantage of all options.
Kelly Hoover has been asking regularly what our plans are with the library. So I think other than the request for photos, I think that's probably the number two requests we get from her. Yeah, she's very involved.
All right, thank you.
I would like to hear from the, if there's any speakers from the public.
We do have four speaker slips and if any members of the Zoom webinar wish to speak, please raise your hand and I will call on you. Our first speaker in person is Harold Hill.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Harold Hill. My friends call me Hal. I'm the past president of the Live Oak Unitarian Universalist Congregation in District One. We're at 820 North Fairview Avenue, which is just about, you know, two tenths of a mile walking distance from the existing library. And some of the things that we do in the community are we co-sponsor the Showers of Blessings, which is at least two different locations in Galita, you know, providing their services. This year we are doing Chase the Chill Project again, like we did last year, collecting all kinds of clothing for people who are houseless and, and distributing that clothing. And any one who wants to donate to the project can drop those clothes off at 820 North Fairview. I'm here this, this evening to talk to you about the fact that we would like to offer our facilities at Live Oak for some of the activities that might be a part of the library service. For instance, Storytime could be a part of what we do there and we have a children's classroom and we even have a library of children's books there that we could make available. Senior Happy Hour could be done in our fellowship hall. And also Book Club could meet in our cottage, and I think we already have a Book Club meeting there in the cottage, but we, we have parking right on site of 50, 53 stalls in, in the parking lot and we have all kinds of, of on-street parking as well. So we, we are offering this just to try to do our part to keep as much of the service in District One as we can for the convenience of the people who are used to using the library there now. I've talked to Joanne Plummer, your Neighborhood Services Director, and let her know about our offer and we discussed, you know, the staff taking a, a tour of our campus to see how it might, might work out. I'm here, you know, to, to answer any of the questions that the city council may have. And if, if, if there's some way that I can, can assist, just let me know and I'd be happy to address any questions you have now.
Thank you so much for that offer.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Leann Palmer, followed by Jennifer Smith.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to make this very brief. First of all, I want to thank you. You have already put in a ton of work on this project. It's going to be hard, but you're going to do a great job for all the people who use the existing library and it's going to be better when we come back. I hope when the two years are up, that everything has gotten done because to me, the community center was closed for a really long time and quite frankly, those bathrooms look exactly the same. I don't know what was done, but I don't see it. So I'm hoping we get new bathrooms. But I've read all the material that I can find online about the library. I know this is about ADA. I understand that. I get it. But the question I have for all of you is, are you going to fix the roof that leaks while the library's closed? It's not funny to have a library that's had a roof leak for more than three years. They have to put down tarps and buckets when it rains. We're going to close this library, but we're not going to fix the roof at the same time? I know it's not the same pot of money, but if we're not going to fix the money now, the roof now, when are we going to fix that library's roof? Anybody have an answer? Forty-eight million for a bike path, but we can't fix the roof.
Sure, I mean, I didn't know anything about the roof, to be honest.
Mayor, just note for public comment, I think after public comments solicited, staff can address specific questions.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it.
You didn't know the roof leaked at our library?
I did not.
I'm very depressed. Thank you.
I didn't hear about it. Okay, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Smith, followed by David Ristic.
Good evening, council members. Just one comment in terms of if, if there is the use of the location here at the 6500 location, the thought has crossed my mind about crossings across Los Carneros and the potential for that to increase if the site moves here and just thinking about people safely accessing a new site. So I think if, if that is the site, really wherever the site is, thinking about communications, about how to safely access the site for, you know, if somebody can't drive, how are people getting there? Or, you know, where there's maybe other programming options in other locations that will be helpful as well. But, you know, with Fairview and with Stork, the, the high school and the junior high school, we, we, there's already a lot of activity and so I'm, I'm just thinking through what might change if Los Carneros is used more and thinking about safety. So that thought came to mind. And then in terms of potential outreach options, the thought in the discussion came to my mind about different of our mobile home parks as well. So just throw that out there as food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last public speaker is David Ristic.
Good evening. I admire your stamina. I'm a board member of the Friends of the Library and as you saw during the presentation, there was a mention of our activities. But you may all know, but I wanted to just take a few minutes to remind you that the Friends, our sole purpose is to benefit the library. We don't do anything else. We're a nonprofit and that support, and how do we do this? We do this by our membership fees, our grants we get, our book sale, maybe some of you have taken advantage of that when you walk in there. We sell a lot of one, two and three dollar books just for the library. And then we do the monthly speaker programs where 40, 50 people with community come and that's, that's all of our activity. So when we heard about this change, of course, we were concerned and the staff report mentioned that we can, we were contributing $250,000 to the project for the bathrooms. What the staff report didn't say was we have contributed on average over the last five years, $100,000 a year. So we really don't want to be lost in this shuffle. And I think if I have the numbers correct, what's really different is there's like 200,000 visits to the library right now. So this is not a small library and those 200 visits are walking by our little book sales, generating that money that's going to support the programs. And it, it really only involves a few activities. We have to have a way to get donations. We have to have a way to organize those donations. We have to have a way to sell those donations and then we need to work with the library to collect the funds. And so it's, it's pretty simple, but you can see in this new environment, it's all changing and we don't want to lose out and go back to where we were COVID. Our membership really did stick with us, you know, you know, we get great turnouts at the presentations and we, we really feel good about the direction we're, we're going. But when we looked at the alternative sites and we know it's not a perfect world, we, we realize everybody's going to have to make sacrifices to make this thing work. And so I just wanted to come on part of the board to emphasize to you guys to not forget about us and if there's any creative ways that can be thought of as, as we can keep that foot traffic or whatever we can do to continue, continue to generate the, the monies that we are and, and we gladly, you know, the last librarian, certainly with Elizabeth, tell us what you need. Tell us what you need. We've got money. We want to, you know, we want to buy materials. We want to sponsor programs. We want to do whatever you need. And so we don't want to lose that opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I do have one hand raised on Zoom. Krista Rodkey, if you would please accept the prompts that are going to be on your screen.
Thank you. Yeah, I wanted to say, so I'm out in the Elwood side of things and I'm very excited about the idea of the, the library being temporarily on this side of town. I can, I, I mean, I hear all of these other things about missing the library from its usual place, but I do really hope that, that there will be a chance to get some new, sort of new recruits. And, you know, I will say that, you know, people used to call it outer Mongolita, like that you live really, really far out. But, you know, there's the Costco Center here, so a lot of people do come really regularly to this side and, you know, it's actually a very easy drive from the Costco Center. So even though I, I love busing and trying to get people to bus, I just wanted to say for this location that I think it, it could be really, it could be really valuable and, and maybe it will get more foot traffic than we think. And is there not a reason, I mean, is there a reason we couldn't just have the Friends of the Library books sale sort of still being, being there, I wonder? the Friends of the Library books sale sort of still being there, I wonder? Anyway, thank you. That's my comment, I guess.
Thank you.
And we have no additional speakers at this time.
So Madam Mayor, if you'd like, I think staff is prepared to make a comment on the roof.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. So the roof did leak. It used to leak like a sieve. You know, I started here in January of 2022, and that was the first, that was right in the rainy season. And it rained, it leaked badly. So I think my first, you know, late-night trek to a city facility in the dark was to go to the back staff room, which was notorious for leaking, and to be putting down buckets, and everything was wrapped in plastic, right, all of the workstations. In the last two years, we've hired roofing companies three times to come out and make substantial repairs to the roof. The last time it rained last year was another nighttime visit, and it was bone dry. And not a single bit of visqueen was up in the back staff area. So I would look to Ms. Sascido if you've seen any additional leakage. Maybe a little bit, you know, maybe not in that particular area. It's a 53-year-old building, you know, so we do get occasional leaks. But the pervasive systemic leakage that we had before has been cured. As part of the library project, the fascia repair, and especially where the fascia meets the roof and the guttering system, that will be taken care of to some extent. So there are additional improvements to be made in terms of drainage and sheeting off of the roof. But we've made big strides in securing that building over the last couple of years.
Could you also comment on the bathrooms in the community center?
Oh, absolutely. So, yeah, to address that, you know, the community center was closed for a seismic retrofit. And that was really to tie the walls and the floors together and the walls and the roof together, right? And so it's so that the building moves as one unit. The restrooms were not part of that project. The restrooms will be part of the ADA project. So as part of making those ADA compliant, those will be fully remodeled. So what we did do was paint them, you know, they hadn't received. But that's a far cry from a remodel. We acknowledge that. Yeah.
Councilmember Kerriaco.
Thanks. I had my light on to ask that exact same question. But I think the follow-up is really more of a comment. This underscores why it's important to not delay the ADA project at the community center. Because we're trying to put out some other fire for a little while. That impacts the bathrooms at the community center for maybe a couple more years if we had delayed that. How much would the cost have gone up? So I, you know, this is an example of spending some good money, making some good changes. You know, I've heard suggestions that we shouldn't have got the grant or we should have turned the grant away. I mean, this is an example of why that's, you know, maybe not the best comment, maybe not most constructive comment. We need to make these changes. Can you talk a little bit about, the report talked a little bit about safety? Can you talk about the safety aspect of making the changes at the library?
Absolutely.
Bringing it back to the library, which we're agendized for.
Councilmember Kerriaco, Madam Mayor. Yes, there are, you know, there are a number of safety upgrades. You know, life safety systems, for one, access controls. We can separate the, you know, the staff from patrons on the outside, putting in an extra exit. You know, that's always been, one of the key considerations is having a separate exit to the buildings. We'd have two ways of egress. An upgraded fire system is another, so a whole litany of safety upgrades, yeah.
So while ADA accessibility is obviously very important, there's also some very, very important elements to this project and this grant that go beyond simple accessibility. I've heard it suggested in the community, like, oh, couldn't you just wait and do that later? Well, if there's a fire safety issue, if there's, you know, safety for employees getting in and out of there issues, those are things that need to get addressed, right? Okay, that's it for me, then.
Madam Mayor, I'm ready for council comments if we're there. I can hold off if there are other questions. I don't think I have any other questions. Deliberations, yes. It's late. I'll keep my comments brief because I know it's late. Thank you so much to everyone who stuck in here for this item. I really, really appreciate it. I know we all appreciate it and all the, you know, email and calls that we've gotten over the last few weeks. I do support the staff recommendation. I think that's the best option, given all the different pieces that we've got to look at. I want to thank the Friends of the Library for just their continued partnership with the city. I'm really glad to hear that feedback. And think, you know, when I think for myself, what can I do to help communicate to the public how to continue to support the library and get us through? The first thing I'm going to say is, would you consider a membership for the Friends of the Library? And supporting their programming? I know I probably need to renew my own membership. But that's a great way to, you know, communicate to the public, a way to support the library. And thank you to Mr. Hill. I think you are such a perfect example of this community to come here and offer that and offer, you know, another option for a solution. I just deeply appreciate that. And I think it's such a perfect example of Galita for you to have done that. So thank you. Those are my comments. I'm sure others have others. But thanks to everyone for sticking through the late night. Councilmember Kasdan.
I'll just echo those thoughts, and thanks, Hal, also. But just, I appreciate that. We're going to do everything we can for those, for the Friends and for the constituents, the users of the library. We're doing, the staff is dedicated and committed to pursuing every option to provide the programming, whether it's Storytime at the park or using that kind of offer. But that, you know, there's a myriad of different creative ways that we can produce the additional space that we take for granted, in a sense, right now. And we'll, you know, it's a two-year window. We'll do everything we can to provide the services and the programming that's there now. And I'm confident and I appreciate the work that you guys have done to and will be doing on making that available. So, thanks.
Councilmember Kerriaco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I also want to thank Mr. Hill. I wasn't thinking at the start of this meeting that that's what I was going to be doing tonight. But I imagine the chalice is burning bright over at Live Oak. Yeah. I really want to thank our staff for scrambling. I know when we started off this process a number of weeks ago, this was not the preferred option. I appreciate your being nimble and agile to be responsive to our community and to be responsive to our council. This is good staff work. Really appreciate it. It matters. This is, this outcome, I think that if we're going the way I think we're headed, I think it matters. And this is, this is why we're so lucky to have all of you. You know, I think this is a great example. I'm going to do a cliche of turning lemons into lemonade. This is a win-win-win situation for Galita. While we are trading short-term discomfort and inconvenience for people, there's long-term gain for our community. And at the same time, we are pushing ourselves to do things that we haven't done before. Library programming in Old Town hasn't been a thing. It's going to be a thing. There are 5,000 residents, I believe, is the estimate, that live within a half-mile of that section of Old Town where the community center is, that would be able to walk to library services, to be able to ride their bike to library services. That's a big deal to the hundreds and thousands of people that live nearby the temporary location. A reintroduction to the library or perhaps an introduction to the library. I really hope that people that, if we do go forward, that people that live in the neighborhood where this library will be located and where this facility is, will take advantage of the gift that will be coming to their community. Because it's an incredible library staffed by incredible people. I think this is a really, a really good example of going back to the drawing board, rethinking assumptions, getting creative, and never losing sight of the fact that at the end of the day, it's about our community, all of our community. So the little things for me, I really want to make sure that we are listening to the Friends of the Library, that we are taking meaningful steps to ensure that we retain programming and we do whatever we can to get collections, book van, or however we need to do it in that neighborhood, in that area. Because, you know, we don't want to have negative impacts. We don't want to lose people that have been regular library patrons and have them feel like they've lost something. I think that's really important, that even as we expand services and, you know, kind of take advantage of what is a challenge and turn it into an opportunity that we don't lose sight of the fact that this is still going to be an inconvenience for people, and we have to be there for them. So I'm looking forward to coming, you know, hearing back about, you know, from a financial standpoint, what would it look like for us to make sure that we have good programming in some of these other neighborhoods, these neighborhoods that are being impacted? And what would it look like to have the book van have some kind of a regular route? Keeping in mind also, there's a whole bunch of people that pay into Measure L. You know, we've talked about the Friends of the Library. But everyone who owns a home, owns a parcel, is paying into Measure L and not just in our city, in the eastern Galita Valley. And they've had to commute for years and decades to access library services at the current location. So as we move further to the west on a temporary basis, those people that are not our constituents but do pay into our library, they're going to be a little bit more inconvenienced, too. So I think we should also be looking at, as a responsible zone administrator and a real, true branch library, we should also be thinking about those constituents that don't live within the city of Galita borders but pay into this library and depend on this library. Because libraries are for all of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Richards.
Thank you. Well, I also want to thank the community for your interest and your involvement, and especially for those who are here tonight and stuck out, stuck with us through this whole evening. I know it was a very long evening. In particular, I want to thank the Friends of the Library. And I really want to recognize that group for the support, for their involvement, and for all the good that they do in supporting our library. And also thank Mr. Hill. And I hope, you know, our staff can work with you to, you know, look into the possibility of what you're offering. I think that's really wonderful. Thank you so much. I, you know, I recognize that this is going to be an inconvenience for a lot of people. You know, it would be great if we could do the work that needs to be done without the disruption that we're facing. But, you know, we have a 50-year-old building that houses our library, and it's in need of some repair. And it's hard to look, you know, turn away a $4.2 million grant from the state to make these needed repairs. I think we, you know, we can agree that even though it is an inconvenience, it's going to be better in the long run, and it'll be better when we come out of it. Unfortunately, there will be the inconvenience in the meantime. I support the 6500 option for leasing that space. I think it's a much better space, considering that this will allow us to continue the work on schedule with the, with the community center, get those bathrooms repaired, get the other things in there that we need, the ADA upgrades. I think that building will be much better when we can finish that project as well. I also agree that, you know, I would be in support of expanding our book van or at least looking at other options for how we can serve, better serve the service area for the library. And I appreciate the comments that were made, that the service area is more than just the city of Galita. We already are going into Isla Vista. There may be some other areas to look at as well, especially in the eastern Galita Valley. And then I'm just, I'll just reiterate my comment that I hope that we can look at battery storage in addition to the diesel or backup generator. I didn't hear any of my comments. Other colleagues mentioned that, but I do want to mention that again. Thank you.
Okay, so I am really going to be brief. It's almost 11 o'clock. I've sat here and listened to you all, and it's been, you know, you all stayed to be able to speak because you care. You all care about the library, and we care that you care. And I know that this is a community that when people are in need, they come out and they help. And I think, I feel excited about it. It's going to be different, but I feel there's excitement from the staff, the library staff. They've come up with some good ideas, and we're all going to work together on this. And I'll be honest, I thank our staff for finding this place. I walked in and I, yes, it's smaller, but you have to take a tour and see it. It's really quite beautiful, and I can just imagine it. I think it can work. And especially if we look at other locations and with people, generous people like Mr. Hill, I think there'll be others that will come out and say, what about, you know, we have this space. What about, there's some kind of a program there? So, I mean, that's what Galita's all about. It's always what we've been about. So I feel we're going to work through this. It's two years. And then our library will be safe. And yes, the community center, you can't really see what they did at the community center, but we had to close it down for quite a long time because it wasn't safe to be inside of it if there was an earthquake. And so the retrofitting is in the walls and in the floors and all the improvements they've done. You know, it now makes it accessible to all of us. It was our insurance company that closed it down. And now we're going to be able to finish with the ADA accessibility, which is so needed. So I'm excited. We're doing some really good things in Galita. So busy, very busy. But, so thank you all for being here. So I can support 6500.
I'm happy to make a motion to get a summary. I move that we direct staff to pursue a short-term lease at 6500 Hollister Avenue, Suite 100, to serve as a temporary library location during construction of the Library ADA Safety and Building Improvement Project, and authorize staff to research and apply for grants for emergency backup generators at the library and community center.
I'll second.
Okay. Vote, please.
Councilmembers, please remember to lock in your votes. Councilmember Richards.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerriaco.
Aye.
Councilmember Kasdan.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Porreas Martin.
Aye.
And Mayor Prode.
Aye. Ayes have it. Okay. We're set.
Madam Mayor, could I just add one thing? So with this direction, the next steps, then, we will send a letter of intent and begin to pursue negotiations. Just to be clear, we don't have something for you. You didn't approve a lease. You directed us to do that. So, thank you.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Are there any reports, any committee members need to make a report on anything? No? Okay. City manager, or city manager report, or city attorney? No? Nothing? Okay, then this meeting is adjourned.